Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a different night meeting of the City of Sandy Planning Commission. And this is Wednesday, December 16, 2020. And we will jump right in. This is a continuation. The public hearing is a continuation, but we will begin with a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Carlton.
Present.
Commissioner Losowski.
Here.
Commissioner McLean-Wenzel.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Maithen.
Here.
And Chairman Crosby.
Here. Okay, we had minutes, the draft minutes from our last, last month's meeting, our 23rd of November, 2020. They were in the packet for our approval tonight. Any corrections, changes, additions? If not, we'll take a motion.
A motion that we approved the minutes as written.
I'll second. And I have to abstain. I was not there.
So we have the motion to approve the, and second to approve the November 23rd minutes. All in favor, raise your hand. Say hi.
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 Okay, I see all that with one noted abstention of Mr. Logan, because he was not here. Okay, this is the time in any, all of our meetings when we give opportunity for the public to speak to the planning commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. We will do that same thing tonight. If you are here on the Zoom meeting, you click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're on the telephone, dial star nine, and that will effectively raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. So this is open to the public for comments to the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. The next on the agenda is our commissioners discussion. I don't know if we have anything in particular tonight, although Kelly, if you could mention about the vacancies or the new commissioner and so forth, what was accomplished?
Yeah, so I think it was December 3rd, about two weeks ago. Chairman Crosby, two city councilors and the mayor, the four of them made up the selection review committee for the new commissioners. We had three good candidates. City Council and Mr. Crosby were unanimous in choosing two of the three, and forwarded that on to City Council on the 7th. On the 7th, the City Council made a motion and have decided to reappoint Commissioner Maithen. So congratulations, Commissioner Maithen. So he'll be joining us for many more years. And they also appointed Mr. Hook, Stephen Hook. His first meeting will be the January meeting, and we look forward to having him as well. He served with the City of Fairview as a planning commissioner for over three years. So he'll be coming to us with some planning commissioner experience, which is pretty exciting. So a little bit less of a learning curve on that, since land use is so complicated in the state of Oregon. So we are, we do still have one vacancy. I don't know when we'll open that, but I'm sure pretty soon, and we'll be taking applications again at that time. And then I'm sure we'll be meeting again sometime in January, the committee, and making a choice on another person. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about any departing commissioners. Chair Crosby?
Yes, we are sad to see Todd leave and John. We, we have, I have appreciated your, your service, your comments. It took us a while to get some words out of John. You were just, you were just beginning to bloom, John, and then you stepped off. But for the, I think we mentioned it before, but maybe not for the rest of the commissioners, the, the city gave both John and Todd a lovely little memorabilia item of, of their time on the commission. And it doesn't do justice to how much we appreciate your service. And we would like to, like to have you in the audience sometime, so we can call on you for some, some advice. But I don't know if any other commissioners have comments to our departing gentlemen. This will be their last, last meeting.
No, I just, I guess I would like to, you know, Jerry, thank both John and Todd. You know, John, you know, I know sometimes you haven't said a lot, but you know, that's kind of important, I think, because that means when you do say something, you know, it's usually pretty, pretty good. So, you know, good luck. And if you, appears there's an open position, you decide to have second thoughts. You know, maybe you might consider that. And Todd, I think we, you know, we've talked with you. We had a chance to, all of us, kind of, I think a few meetings ago, share with you our concerns. And so I'm, I'm sad to see you leave, particularly under the circumstances, but I understand. But I hope you'll still be glad to be a resource for us. I'm not sure, having three planning or three traffic engineers in the same room is legal in the state of Oregon. But, you know, at least maybe two, you know, might work. So anyway, I just want to thank you very much for your tolerance, and I hope you'll be able to, you know, be back with us at some point in time in the future.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate all your work.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. I'll still be around.
I'll be around as well.
Good.
John, you still, you still owe us a tour of your factory.
Oh, right. Or that, I get, did I give you a tour of the new building or not? Oh, the factory, yeah. Unfortunately, we're not taking visitors for the foreseeable future.
Well, remember when you do. Okay, thanks again, gentlemen. And you're not done yet. You still have one more, one more hearing tonight to participate in. So that said, we will move ahead into the continuation of public hearing. And this is file 20028, the views, plan development. And we will continue the public hearing starting at 7:12. I'm going to go through the, the normal things, even though it's a continuation, but we do want to fulfill the letter of the law. And I'll call for any abstentions from anybody on the planning commission. Okay, nothing seen or noted? Any conflicts of interest to note? Okay, any ex parte contact? And it's kind of important. I know I'll, I'll start. I did get, received a, oh, maybe, maybe it was three emails that were sent directly, I assume, to the whole commission. I don't know. My normal habit is, first of all, if I don't recognize the sender, sender's name, and I see something in the subject line that just comes across my computer that deals with the planning commission, I will blow it away. I did that once a few weeks ago, and it was a city staff person whose name I didn't recognize. But I, I believe I would just say for the record that I, I think it was three emails. I don't even know who they were from. I did not read them. I blew them away. I could just see that it has something to do. It was from a citizen to the planning commission. So others, I assume, kind of got the same things, and if so, we need to declare it for the record.
Yeah, I received one, you know, from John Andre. I received also another one. I don't recall the name of the person. I do open them. I do look at them because of their testimony. We're going to see it anyway. So, yeah, but I, but basically, I don't respond to either one. I simply forward them on to Kelly, and then he goes ahead and makes them part of the record. So I've had no interaction with the individuals, and I just forward them on to Kelly.
Chairman, I too, I received two emails in the past two weeks, one from John as well. But I read the first three lines on it and then realized what I was reading and stopped, and I forwarded it to the, our director, who subsequently told me it was okay to read it, because it had been shared with everyone. And then just a few days ago, I received another one from a person named Bart. But I did not read that one at all, because by the time I saw it, I'd already seen an email dispersed from the planning division sharing it with everyone. And then I read it after that. I have not responded to either of the communications that came to me, but I have read the entirety of both documentations, which are both on the record today.
Chris, your mic is very faint, at least to my ears. Others experiencing the same thing?
Right.
Okay.
I received at least the two emails that were just mentioned, and I did not open them.
I had ditto the John and everyone else. Couple of emails forwarded to Kelly and not responded to anyone.
Same here. The only thing I read were the things Kelly sent on.
Same. I think I received three, treated them the same as, as others here.
Nick, can I just add something real fast, Jerry? So for any of the, this is Kelly, I'm the director who they're talking about in their comments. And I'm on the city planning staff. For anybody listening from the public, if you could please remember in the future to send public comments directly to planning, P-L-A-N-N-I-N-G, at cityofsandy.com, or ci.sandy.org.us. Those go to the same address. It just really helps the commissioners out by not getting a bunch of extra information. If you forward them to the planning@cityofsandy.com, it becomes part of the record, and then we forward it to the planning commission, usually the same day, if not within a few days afterwards. So I'd really appreciate it if people in the public can really just send it to planning staff, and then we can distribute.
I would add that once it's in the record, then it's no longer ex parte, and we don't, don't have to go through this disclosure.
I did. Chris, I do think it's important in this instance, though, the disclosures that the planning commission made, because several people asked for them to respond in their emails. And I think it's very important, as the commissioners have explained, that even though people that sent them email communication directly asked for responses, as indicated by the planning commissioners, nobody actually did respond.
Right. Shouldn't engage. To, in, on that point, Kelly, and Mr. Chair, do, do any of the commissioners actually have any conversations with anyone beyond the emails?
No. I have not. I'm isolated at home. I'm a COVID isolate.
Thank you. Am I back on? I think I was out there with my computer slowed down.
The applicant's attorney has a question, assuming based on ex parte. So I'm assuming you're going to ask for any questions or any, at the end, Jerry? I don't know if you're to that point at this time. I do know that Commissioner Logan did not attend the meeting last month. So I would like to hear some information from him on whether he watched the video and he feels like he's up to speed enough tonight to forward a recommendation. And then if you could give me input on allowing Mr. Robinson to speak or not.
Okay. I watched the video almost, well, more than once, since I watched it one and a half times. I read the minutes. I read all of the material, and thankfully, there weren't as many, I guess, letters from the public and form of testimony as Dale Meadows. That would have taken a lot longer, but I took care of everything.
Okay, thank you. And yes, Mr. Robinson, if you had a question related to this, we'll take it. Microphone.
Thank you. Think I know that by now. Thank you. I just had two questions, Chair Crosby, related to the ex parte contact revelations or disclosures. First of all, are the emails that the various commissioners referred to part of the record now?
Yes.
Okay, Shelley shaking her head. Okay, thank you. And the city attorney asked if any commissioner had any personal conversation, either an in-person conversation or a telephone call or an email exchange, and I didn't hear any of the commissioners say yes to that.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Chair Crosby, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any challenges to the planning commission or any individual members? This would come from the public. Again, if you want to participate, if you're on Zoom, click the raise your hand. If you're on the telephone, it's star nine to raise your hand.
Sorry, I have little kids in the room. Um, I do not see anybody that has their hands raised.
Okay. And I will read these statements again, even though this is a continuation, but assuming that there may be some new participants in the audience who haven't heard them before. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish, wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later at any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued, except this, since this is a continuation, I do not believe that that is true in this, this part of the hearing, to a later date or that the record remain opening, open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I will also add, as a reminder, not that we need it for the, to the planning commission, but more to the public that the planning commission's task in this hearing is to forward the application on the city council with our comments, with our recommendations, denials, approvals. It's going to be a different, different thing. And so there will be another public hearing before the city council on this matter. So there will be, to the public, you will have another opportunity to give testimony and provide testimony in the future. Also, we'll say, just to the planning commission, that this is a different thing. We kind of struggled with it last time. It's exactly what is it, what is it we're supposed to do? We're used to passing things on to city council with recommendations of approval or denial. They're usually kind of a little bit different than a land use thing. They may be, you know, a zone change proposal, or it might be a, an annexation, those kinds of things. And this one has come to us, and as I looked at it, it was, I mean, it's just like what we're used to seeing, a regular land use, a proposal, application that we make a decision on. And so that, that's awkward to us. At least it is to me. We're used to making decisions on these kinds of things. And in this case, because it's a planned development, that's not the way it works. We are sending it on to city council, and they will be making the final decision. So with that said, we've asked, or I asked Shelley to kind of bring us up to date. She's updated the PowerPoint. And also, this is for the public, for new people that may be here. So Shelley, we turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, so this isn't the same presentation that I gave last time. It's more of kind of a 10,000-foot overview with a little bit of additional information. So just to refresh everybody's memory, this land use application is for two lots on Highway 26 over on the east side of Sandy, on either side of Vista Loop Drive. It's 32.87 acres, but when we take out the area that is in the FSH overlay, the flood and slope hazard overlay overlay, that leaves us with 21.01 acres for development. It's zoned here. You can see the lots red. That color signifies single-family residential. The area outlined in that lime green color has a comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential. That blue triangle you see, I should have included the legend, but basically, that means it's just a viewpoint for Mount Hood. So the applicant is requesting a few things. One, a plan development, which I'll explain a little bit more of what a plan development means. Subdivision of land into individual parcels. Two, type III special variances that I'll kind of give an overview of. FSH overlay review, which I'll also talk about, and then also tree removal, obviously, for development. So just to give a little bit of history on this project, the applicant, Even Better Homes, started the discussion with city staff back in January of 2019. On May 29th, the applicant had a pre-app conference with city planning staff. In June and July of this year, the applicant submitted all of their materials. The first submission was deemed incomplete. They submitted what, what we needed to review the application, and then we deemed the application. On November 23rd was the first planning commission hearing. Tonight, December 16th, is the second planning commission hearing, and then it will go to city council at a date to be determined. So just to give a little bit of background on what a plan development is, it's both a type of development as well as a legal process. So there's a few things that are part of the intent of a plan development, and I took this directly from Sandy's Development Code. It encourages a mixture of housing types and densities. It allows for flexibility in site planning and land use. It encourages environmental conservation. Rather than, you know, sticking to the, the letter of the zoning and development code, it takes kind of more of a form-based approach through coordinating building form, and then also it provides common recreation areas. So there's a trade-off, and that's the job of planning commission to determine if that trade-off is beneficial to the city. So implementing what the code calls outstanding design elements, which may not be explicitly supported by the development code. So that's the trade-off is, you know, is the city, is the planning commission, is city council willing to waive some of the letter of the development code in exchange for what the code calls outstanding design elements as part of the development proposal? So the applicant in, under a plan development is allowed to request modifications to quantitative code requirements, including the underlying zoning district density. And I think that that's been a point of confusion of a lot of people asking, you know, this is zoned, single-family residential, so why are they proposing, you know, townhouses and, you know, two apartment buildings? And that's because that's part of the PD, plan development process, is allowing for an increase, a quantitative increase in density beyond what the underlying zoning district allows. So this is the overall site plan. It's divided into two phases. The north arrow you'll see over on the left is not actually pointing up, so that might explain why it looks a little wonky, but you'll see the phase one of the lower views, and then phase two of the upper views. So the lower views, they're proposing 39 single-family detached homes, so what we think of as, you know, a house on a lot. 32 single-family attached homes, which I've outlined here in red. So those are townhouses or row houses. And then 24 multifamily homes. So that's an apartment building. The upper views is being proposed to have 49 single-family detached homes and 24 multifamily homes on that lot that we see outlined in red. So there was a little bit of confusion about the math on this, and I probably didn't do the best job explaining it, but there are 122 lots on this site, or being proposed to be subdivided on the site. 120 of those are being proposed as single-family lots. That breaks down to 32 attached, single-family lots, and 88 detached, single-family lots. There are two multifamily lots with 24 units each. So 32 plus 88 plus 24 plus 24 is 168 total dwelling units. So I talked a little bit about density and how density was part of the PD process. So under the current, single-family residential zoning, a minimum of 63 and a maximum of 159, single-family homes are allowed, according to the net acreage. So the applicant is requesting an increase to that allowed density as part of the plan development process. According to the code in the plan development chapter, we can allow an increase of density up to 25%. Again, that's permitted upon a finding that the plan development is outstanding and planned land use and design. So that's up to 25%. That's allowable. The applicant is requesting a 6% density increase. And so that 168 total dwelling units that are being proposed is 6% greater than the maximum 159 a single-family homes allowed currently on the site. One, you see that asterisk, one condition, because of House Bill 2001, any number of these homes could be duplexes. So if we double that 159, that could lead to as many as 318 units, which is a lot of units on 32 acres. So just something to keep in mind that, right now, with the zoning, it's between 63 and 159, but once House Bill 2001, once that, those code changes are implemented, if a developer came in and wanted to build duplexes, that could be as many as 318 dwelling units. So some of the outstanding design elements that the applicant has in their proposal include a mix of housing types and densities, private recreation tracks integrated into the development, a proposed allay of trees along the majority of street frontages, a sound wall along Highway 26, and the open space and recreation areas total more than what would be required in dedicated parkland. There are a few other quantitative code deviation requests, which there's, this goes into much more detail in the staff report, but I just wanted to mention them briefly here. That includes row houses and multifamily housing, smaller lot sizes, smaller minimum average lot width, smaller interior side yard setbacks, smaller rear yard setbacks, and longer block lengths. So the plan development process allows for quantitative code deviations, but the applicant was still required to apply for two special variances for qualitative code deviations. So one of those variances that they are applying for are the front doors on the southwest side of the upper views, according to the According to the code, would need to face Highway 26, but the applicant is requesting that they're allowed to face those to the internal streets, especially because there's going to be a sound wall along Highway 26. And then the second qualitative request is removing sidewalks from various street frontages. We'll go into just a little bit of detail with those. So the code section says that homes abutting a transit street, like Highway 26, need to face the transit street. The lots that I have outlined there in red, abut Highway 26, and the applicant is requesting that those can face that internal street as opposed to Highway 26. So that's the first special variance being requested. The second special variance being requested deals with sidewalk improvement requirements. So the development code requires sidewalks and planner strips along all streets. The applicant is requesting to waive this requirement specifically along the south side of the View Drive. And instead, they're proposing to install a meandering walkway along Bonnie Street, the north side of the View Drive, and Vista Loop in lieu of sidewalks. So you'll see in that image where that red line is, is where they're proposing meandering sidewalks. As of this morning, we've received 31 public comments, mostly against, a few in support. Again, these comments are all, the full letters are in the public record. They're in the exhibits. This morning, I uploaded an additional exhibit to the agenda, including all of the comments that we've received between the time we originally posted the agenda on the 11th and this morning. Some key concerns, traffic safety, especially turning from Highway 26 onto Vista Loop Drive. The lack of code required improvements, so those sidewalks. Ignoring the requests of existing residents, potential encroaching development in the flood and slope hazard area. The capacity of public services like fire, police, and utilities. Increased traffic on already busy streets. Removal of wild animal habitat, significant increase in housing density. Changing the character of the area, lowering the value of adjacent land. Lack of amenities for future residents and safety walking along the streets. Some of the points and support are that it's coming from a local developer as opposed to an outside developer. It will increase public revenue. The SDC credits will help pay for the new wastewater treatment facilities that Sandy is being required to implement. And improvement of Vista Loop Drive. So I also just wanted to touch on one more thing. There's a little bit of confusion about whether or not there's going to be development in the FSH, or if development is being proposed in the FSH. So the blue area you see is the flood and slope hazard. And you will see that none of the lots that are being proposed to have houses, they go right up to the edge of the FSH, but none of them overlap with the FSH. There is just a little bit of confusion about that, and so I wanted to make sure that we made that clear.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley. You did a lot of work on it. We appreciate it. We will move on. I know that the, the applicant has some additional type comments that they wanted to share before we go to public testimony. So that go to you, Tracy?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Well, I just, I forgot to, to do the spiel about giving us your name and address, but you know, you know that pretty well.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Tracy Brown. I live at 17075 Fur Drive in Sandy. And I've been the land use planner on the project since kind of the inception of it. So tonight, I wanted to go through a little PowerPoint to kind of touch on a few of other things that Shelley didn't touch on. And before I do that, I just wanted to refer you to some of the exhibits that we submitted in our last round of exhibits. And these were exhibit II, which are some responses to questions that were identified in the staff report. We also provided a memo from Ray Moore regarding sanitary sewer capacity. There was additional memo from Mike R., who's the traffic consultant regarding the right lane on the highway. And that was, we, we saw that there was a, a response from the city traffic consultant kind of agreeing with Mike R.'s analysis of that. So with that, yeah, I think I'll be able to share my screen and I'll do a little presentation to go some, through some of the additional items. Are you able to see my screen there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you very much. So again, this is kind of our opening slide. It, this is a image of the welcome to Sandy sign that the developer has proposed to be placed. It's just kind of a mock-up to be placed kind of at the head of that property, actually, probably on the public right-of-way, there were Vista Loop and the highway intersect. Since there isn't a welcome to Sandy sign there, that's quite a substantial. So I just wanted to go a little bit into the project summary, try not to repeat too much what Shelley said. So these are some images from the development. We have some pictures of the, some of the row homes and an image of houses or a house. So with this, there will be a variety of housing types that was mentioned, and all of these are permitted as part of the plan development. There'll be open space exceeding the city's requirement, as well as parkland that exceeds the city required by, you know, almost two acres. The developers proposing numerous amenities, including trails, a viewing plaza, dog park, and additional parkland. And there's a few features that are a little bit unique to this development that no other development in Sandy has, including a sound wall on the highway, meandering sidewalks, and extensive landscaping. So again, what is a plan development? Shelley kind of talked about it as it's mentioned in the code, but it's really a development process allowing creativity and flexibility in site design and review that cannot be achieved with strict adherence to development regulations. In exchange for this flexibility, the PD process requires the preservation of significant amount of open space. And there's an expectation through the PD process that the development will offer amenities and features not typically found in a traditional subdivision. So how are the, how does a city process PD applications? So if you look at the code, chapter 1764 talks about two parts to the process. One is the conceptual development plan, and the second is the detailed development plan. And essentially, the detailed development plan is like a subdivision. The code does allow combined review, and that's what we've proposed in this application. So you're looking at both the conceptual and the detailed kind of at the same time. And so each of these processes or parts have their own criteria. You know, and this is taken right out of the code. For the conceptual plan, you must assure consistency with the intent of this chapter. And those are the items that Shelley went over, you know, including the mix of housing, flexibility, environmental conservation, coordination of the building form, and providing common recreation areas. The next part is that you must, you must assure that there's compliance with the general provisions, development standards, the application provisions of this chapter, and that was well laid out in the staff report. The next set of criteria, criteria come directly out of the subdivision section of the code, and this is kind of what you're looking at regarding the detailed development plan. So I think that first one there, it talks about the subdivision is consistent with density setback, dimensional standards of the base zone, unless it's modified by a plan development approval. And so this subdivision section kind of contemplates this plan development process with that criteria. If you look at some of the other criteria, it'd be consistent with design standards, which we've shown it is. It provides a connected and consistent street pattern, which it does. Adequate public facilities are available, and there is a testimony in the record from the, both the public works director and city engineer regarding the adequacy of facilities. That improvements meet city standards, and that the phasing plan can be carried out. We are proposing the two phases, the lower views and the upper views. And there's some staff recommended conditions regarding that phasing that we are in agreement with. So why are we proposing a plan development in this particular case? You know, this is a challenging site with some unique features and constraints. There are significant natural areas, as well as the location and Vista Loop Drive and the highway pose other challenges. So with the plan development process, there's a little additional flexibility, which is really essential in kind of developing this project to make it work. You know, kind of, I wrote a statement of what the developer's vision is. He wants to create a high-quality plan development, offering a variety of housing choices with a wide assortment of amenities not found in any other development in Sandy, essentially. And so the array of amenities far exceeds the typical subdivision. So what makes this development particularly unique? It does provide what is called inclusionary housing by offering multiple housing types within a single development to meet the needs of various budgets. It isn't usually, usual to have apartments in places where there's great views of the mountains. But this is, you know, the kind of the vision of the developer to include various housing types, so those amenities can be enjoyed by all kinds of folks. He is proposing some quality building designs and style, as well as the numerous active and passive recreational amenities. This development includes more parkland than is required, more protected open space than is required, and some unique features such as the sound walls, meandering sidewalks, and extensive landscaping. And there will be improvements to Vista Loop Drive. You know, I did a measurement. It's probably about a third of Vista Loop Drive will be from the west to the east will be improved with this development. So why should the application be approved? It offers a wide array of quality livability features and amenities. It is far superior to what could be developed under the code without a plan development, and simply it complies with the code criteria. I just wanted to kind of briefly go through some of the comments that were received and provide a little response to those. So there is a concern about, you know, only single-family homes should be allowed. I wanted to point out that row homes and apartments are permitted uses as part of the plan development process. And if this development were developed, or as a typical subdivision, as Shelley mentioned, those single-family lots could include duplexes, and so the number of units could far exceed what is being proposed today. I would question a little bit, Shelley, on the, some of the lots, because they're row home lots, be pretty challenging to put a duplex, but on the larger lots, certainly a duplex could be put on those lots. Development is proposed in the fish overlay. That was mentioned, and Shelley showed a, a map, so that, that wasn't true, that there is no development posed in the fish overlay. Development on Vista Loop should be limited. You know, most of the properties on the street are large enough to allow additional development. And, you know, this area is identified to include both mix of single-family, and there are some medium-density residential lots on this, on Vista Loop. You know, Vista Loop, there is a concern that currently Vista Loop is a narrow street with no sidewalk. And we do want to point out that, you know, again, that Vista Loop will be improved for at least the frontage of this development. There has been a concern expressed that parks can attract crime. You know, the proposed parks, in this case, are primarily for the enjoyment of the residences, of the residents of the development. We have proposed it as private parks, and, you know, with a public access easement, but we, the developers amenable, amenable to just having those as private parks and signing them as such, so then to prevent others potentially from using these parks, if the concern is to bring in folks from the outside of the community to use these parks. Some additional comments of sewer and water capacity. So the public works director and city engineers doesn't support this claim. Concern with unwardened zone change, quick turnaround developments, potential legal precedents. You know, zone change is not being proposed in this case. It is a planned development, and after the plan development is approved, it is simple, it's a ministerial act to put the PD label on the property, but technically, it's not a zone change per se. It's as part of the plan development. You know, again, this has been a project that's been, the developer's been working on over several years and having conversations with the city. It's not a quick situation here. You know, and really, each application is reviewed on its own merits. So this, whatever the decision is made would not set a precedent, per se. There was a comment that Johnson RV should stay wild. You know, the lower views contain the significant area of protected open space, but it'd be, you know, wouldn't be right to require all of the lower views to remain undeveloped. It has some development potential. There was also a question about what is the design of the apartments going to be? You know, at this point, we've kind of intentionally not identified that because we don't know exactly what the apartments will be. We do know that it would be a maximum of 24 units on each lot, but the requirement will be that would submit a subsequent application, and that would need to go through design review and comply with the Sandy-style design standards, you know, at the time that was submitted. So the public comments in resp, in support, you know, development in this area is inevitable. There is a chance, this is a chance to thoughtfully create a neighborhood from scratch. Another person was impressed with the developer's desire to create a project appealing to a variety of income levels and housing needs. The development will pay its way. It will bring in a diverse mixture of housing types while preserving the view for all to enjoy. And Vista Loop Drive is currently in bad shape and will be improved with this development. And it's unlikely to be improved without a development occurring. And the proposal would fit in well in the existing neighborhood. That was another comment from somebody that was, lives in the neighborhood in support of the development. So I guess with that, I would take any questions you might have at this point. And if there are none, I would hand it over to Mac, even the developer, to provide his presentation. Are there any questions for me at this point?
Okay, let's move on to Mac.
Hello, everybody. Hope you're having a great evening. Just want to introduce myself a little bit. I'm Mac Even. I'm the one proposing the development on Vista Loop, known as the Views. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. A lot of you know me already, but about who I am and, you know, my history. I'm, I'm a real estate developer and a home builder. I've been working locally here my entire career. I grew up in the boring Damascus area. I live in East Gresham, out on the edge of town. My father was a builder and a developer, kind of grown up in the industry around here. And I've been in this community all of my 45 years of life and been working here and trying to, you know, build some good, nice You know, build some good, nice neighborhoods. Um, I'm not, you know, a California developer. I'm not a Lake Oswego developer. I am a Gresham, Sandy. Clackamas County developer. This is my home. This is where me and my family live. This is where my children live and go to school. They go to Barlow, not Sandy High School, although. I kinda would like them to go to Sandy because that high school is beautiful. And so I'm coming into this with a background of. Being here, living here and gonna spend the rest of my life here. I'm looking as this projects like this and other projects I've done as long term investments into the community. Now, when this property came about, I first started looking at this property and I was actually kind of surprised. I went back and looked. And the first time we started trying to figure out something to make. Something work for this property was two thousand and fifteen. It's a very challenging piece of property with FSH overlays, the slopes. And everything that goes along with it. The infrastructure costs are really challenging in terms of making something work that can be. A positive for the community and also be profitable for, for everybody involved. And the idea of a planned development was presented and. We've been working on this for quite a while. It's been almost two years since we initially brought the concept. To the city of Sandy and. Started bouncing ideas around because a project like this doesn't just come about. You know, on the back of a napkin and hey, let's do this. There's a lot of stuff that goes into it, a lot of preparation, a lot of coordination. A lot of planning and zoning, you know. Requirements and things that we're trying to figure out exactly how something like this would all come together. And so we've been working on this for quite a while. And we've come up with the views. The views is a plan development where. We are taking a significant piece of these properties. And putting them into open space, protected environmental areas. And areas that we're not going to touch for both passive and. Well, it's active, sorry, passive and active open space. That will benefit not only the natural environment. Preserve the views, but give the residents in the local area the ability to have active open space and. And enjoy it for their families in the future. One of the things that were, you know, obviously is a big question about this is. It's single family residential, SFR. In the code for SFR, as a lot of you know. It allows for single family residents, but it also allows for planned developments for properties. Such as this, the planned development code was written for these types of challenging properties. In order to give them the ability to be able to develop and become part of the community in the future. A lot of the neighbors on Vista Loop have written letters of some of. A few have written letters of support, many have written letters of dissent. And. I was concerned about this. And I had an opportunity to reach out to one of the, the property owners that's adjacent to the subdivision. And I spoke with him a few days ago and we had a very good conversation. John is a, is a heck of a guy and I really enjoyed interacting with him. And he asked me, do you think you would be able and willing to meet with the neighbors? And talk about what's going on? And, you know, we, I believe me and John spoke on Sunday or Monday. We didn't have much time, but we wanted to see if we could do it before the meeting. So we had a kind of an impromptu neighborhood meeting this morning. And in that meeting, there, I'd say there were a dozen residents, give or take. That were at the meeting and it, it was a good conversation. Me and, and Ray, my engineer were there in attendance and we wanted to hear what they had to say. They were receptive to our conversation and we spent some time, you know, listening and trying to hear. One of the big concerns we had from some of the property owners is obviously the idea of apartments. The reason why the, the apartments are part of this proposal. Is because the infrastructure costs for a project like this. With the challenges that it has with the slopes and habitat and. Flood overlay areas can be quite expensive to deal with. Well, in order to, to make a project like that work to where the infrastructure actually, the infrastructure cost actually. The project actually pays for the infrastructure cost is the opportunity to do a planned development. And you're limited in room in that sense. And so that's why we have proposed a mix of housing. We, we are really trying to create. An opportunity in, in a sense of inclusionary housing. Now, I know that's like a, a tagline for development. The idea behind this is to give. You know, the newly married family, the ability to buy a smaller home. That they can afford or the empty nester, their children can rent an apartment. Or move into a townhouse and move up in the community. And the people that are not at the point where they are quite have the means of the people. You know, that are a little more financially healed can have the opportunity to live in a neighborhood that has the same kind of amenities. That, you know, just to use quote unquote, the upper end neighborhoods get the chance to enjoy. This is an opportunity for all income levels to enjoy the same kinds of amenities. Some other things we heard about and are receptive to is. The apartment buildings and particularly the one on. Slot seventy two, right?
Yes.
Um, sorry, I, I'm looking at a plaque. How do I bring this up, Ray?
Share the screen bottom.
Alright, thank you. I'm not the best tech guy. Okay, so if you look and I, I'm kind of pointing and talking at the same time. But what, what we're calling the lower views behind Johnson RV, we have a proposed apartment complex. That apartment complex has been proposed to be a three story building with twenty four units. Obviously, that's going to impact some of the neighbors and their views and their enjoyment of their property. One of the things that I want to propose today is to remove nine units from that building. And take it from a three story building to a two story building. To hopefully preserve the views for some of the neighbors that have been living in this, in this area for a long period of time. And which would also bring our. Density calculations from a hundred and sixty eight down to the maximum allowed density of a hundred and fifty nine. So I'm no longer asking for any increased density. A hundred and fifty nine units is what the allowed density is. And that's now what we're, what we're asking for. And I want to put that in the record. I'm not exactly sure the best way to do that. I think maybe me saying that kind of did. But. You know. We're trying to figure out a way to make this. The type of project that we have been envisioning and working on for the last couple of years, but also. Hear what the residents that already live in the local area have to say. One of the things that a project like this, the challenges it has is. You know, we, there's infrastructure costs, there's a lot of, you know, roads, sewer lines, water lines, streetlights, sidewalks. Everything that goes along with something like this that has to be paid for. Well, the development has to pay for itself in order to be able to make something like this happen. Under the current single family residential code. There are not enough lots that would be available to be developed to pay for this infrastructure. And, and that's once you remove the areas of environmental and FSH overlay. You, we could develop around eighty five single family lots. All the cost of the infrastructure does not pay for that development. One of the things that has come to light in the last year since after we started working on this project. Is Senate Bill two thousand and one. Senate Bill two thousand and one. Essentially, the state of Oregon threw out single family residential zoning. And it allows for duplexes or multifamily units on single family lots. A development of eighty five single family lots would allow for a hundred and seventy duplex style units. In order to do a project like that, we couldn't do the open space and the amenities and all of the. Passive and active recreational areas that are proposed with this project. This project is also bordered on the south side by commercial. And on the north side by R two multifamily, smaller lot. It's a classic example of a transitionary. Piece of property between different housing types and we've worked to incorporate those into the project. This project is, on, on a personal note. Is the kind of project I've always wanted to develop. It en- it encompasses many, many facets that are positive for the community. Many facets that are positive for many, many income levels. And gives people of all income levels opportunity to live, recreate and enjoy themselves in something. That's special. The alternative is really frankly not that. It's, it's a multifamily duplex, single family mix. The.
Mac, Mac.
Yeah.
May, I, I hate to be the bad guy to interrupt you. But the applicant presentation is getting longer than I ever anticipated it would be this evening. Especially since this is a continuation.
Okay.
Can you quickly cut to the chase? I'm hoping that the applicant does not have three or four other presenters. You can, you can go back to your screen. And if, I, I hate to be the bad guy, but we need to move this along or you're going to wear out the planning commission for our discussion.
Sorry, I apologize. Anyway, I was actually, you know, at my conclusion. I really would like to ask the planning commission and the city council. To recommend approval for this project and allow us to do something special for the, for the community and the residents of this, of the city of Sandy. And I thank you for your consideration.
You can unshare your screen.
Yeah, Jerry, that, that concludes our presentation. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Tracy. Alright, now we're going to move into the public testimony. And as I said last time. We give opportunities in three sections for public testimony. We'll call for those that are in favor of it. And then we'll call for those who are against the proposal. And then for neutral, if you're not sure if you're for it or against it, you just have some comments to make. Keep in mind that we've already heard a large number of public testimony. We ask that you try not to be repetitive. That is saying the same thing that somebody has just said before you. If you spoke last time, your comments are in the record. And again, you will have another opportunity when this comes before the city council. If you wish to speak when I call for the different groups, again, if you're on the Zoom meeting. You click the raise hand button, wait to be acknowledged. If you're on the telephone, it's star nine to, to raise your hand. We do appreciate all the public testimony that we have received. We read them all. We especially appreciate those who point us to specific code sections. You're talking our language when you do that because that's what we have to speak to. With that said, we will move to the testimony of those who are in favor of the proposal. If you are in favor and wish to speak. Hit the raised, raised hand button in Zoom or star nine on your phone. And Kelly will be waiting to see what happens.
Okay, I have somebody already that's raised their hand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow this person to speak. It's phone number one, five oh three, seven eight two. Four, three, three, six. And please say your name and address for the record.
Kelly, Kelly, let me inter- just interject there. If you do, if you get some more that are by telephone, it might be better to just state the last four digits of the phone number. Go ahead.
I unmuted them. They need to.
Speak. Four, three, three, six.
I've asked them to unmute as well.
You need to unmute. Are they on the phone or Zoom?
Yeah, they're on their phone. If you have a smartphone, there should be a button on it that says mute.
There we go.
Yep.
Sorry about that. Uh, Chrissy Anderson, one, seven, one, five, zero, University Avenue. I think this project's a great project. Um, the way it's designed and hearing that he's taken the nine units off that. Lot seventy two to, uh, help accommodate the neighboring views. I think it's a great idea. You know, I'd hate to see, I think the, one of the staff members mentioned that. Possibly the site could suit three hundred and eighteen du- or units if they were duplexes. And I think that would be a, a terrible route for Sandy to have to go or for this developer to have to go with this project. I think this, the way it sets or with the diversity of housing, it'll have diversity of price point. With some rental property or with some rentals in there as well. And you have to have some diversity in affordability in your communities. Because if you don't, it, it ends up hurting your economic growth. And there's all kinds of studies. Harvard's got one from two thousand and four. There's, there's tons of them that substantiate that. You know, so you, just for the economic aspect. It's, you know, it's imperative that Sandy has an open mind at these types of projects. Otherwise, it's going to end up economically causing problems. You know, we have a housing shortage in the metro area. And if we don't do something to resolve that, prices are going to continue to go up and so are rents. And when that happens, people end up having to move out of the area. And when they do, we lose those assets and their, people are assets in our community because they, they, you know, they benefit us tremendously. It's also one of the things that I don't know if it was talked about, maybe I missed it. But I'm pretty certain that this PUD will have a homeowners association. And I don't know if, you know, Mac might be able to answer that, but. I, if I remember right, it will or it's been talked about. And, you know, with this type of project with the, the multifamily and the attached housing. Having a homeowners association to make sure the neighborhood stays looking good and stays in good condition. Will help stabilize and keep values across the board. I mean, I, I think it's. It's a hugely important thing to have that, to have a HOA with this pepper project. Because it, you know, keeps things from deteriorating. And that's about it. That's about all I have to say, but I hope, I hope you guys. And that's about it. That's about all I have to say, but I hope, I hope you guys consider it and pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See any other hands, Kelly?
Yeah, hold on, I'm having trouble, something here. I'm trying to remove this person.
And I suggested not saying the whole phone number, but then I see it shows right up on the screen anyway when they call in.
Yeah, it does. Okay, the next person is Cassidy. Please remember to state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Moore, one nine one two Southwest Sixth Avenue, Portland. And I just, listening to Mac talk, it's really interesting how there is so much room for growth. You know, I'm graduating from college this spring and it's exciting that there's apartments and then maybe a townhouse. And then you can build up to a more family suitable home. So it's just exciting to see some growth. You know, you're not stuck in just this city apartment complex or trails and a dog park. Lots of things to do. Seems like a great location in Sandy and I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Buzz. That will be, what is going on here? Oh, okay. Allow him to speak right now. And you'll have to unmute yourself, Buzz.
All right. Name is Buzz Ortiz. I live at four one five two five Southeast Vista Loop. I am across the street from this particular project. And I wrote a letter in support of it because I think that the alternative, if it was to develop into rentals, duplexes, I think that most of the neighbors that are opposed to it now would think twice about it. So anyway, I am supportive of this project. I think it's a good-looking project. And I've been developing properties in Sandy for the last thirty years. So the opposition is not new to me, but I think that this is a great project that should consider and should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Lindsay Sawyer. Please say your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me now? I'm Lindsay Sawyer. My address is one eight zero eight five Stevens Street. I own a property management company here in Sandy. And I, I really couldn't be more excited about the, the opportunity to, to check this out and to give it, give it a go. I moved to Sandy in two thousand twelve with my young family. We, we've raised them here. My boys just graduated from Killslo. And they're a boring elementary or boring middle school. And I have seen a ton of growth and a ton of growing pains in a lot of different developments throughout Sandy. My, my biggest gripe, I would, would say is each development looks sort of the same wherever you go. And that's historically accurate for Sandy. You've got Cascadia Village, all kind of looks the same. And then we're repeating that over the last ten years. So having just a neighborhood that's a little bit more diverse sounds really nice. We are seeing a ton more people come into Sandy needing rentals, a ton of people selling in Sandy, needing to stay in Sandy, and choosing to rent. But most of our rentals are well over two thousand dollars. We have very little affordable rentals. We've had some apartment buildings come in, but even Sandy Place Apartments are averaging about nineteen hundred dollars. So our need for affordable housing is huge out here. And that's as a, as a PTA member, as a, as a, as a mom, you know, obviously as a property manager, I love profit and rentals, but at the end of the day, I want to see some good families who can't afford those high rents be able to live somewhere nice. The other thing I've seen specifically with Champion Village, because I've been involved with that since the beginning, not only as the property manager, but as the HOA manager as well, is that we've paid into, you know, as developers into these park funds. And then the city has to kind of weed through the mess of figuring out where to put those park funds. And then we have neighborhoods like Hamilton Ridge that have been developed and haven't had a park in twelve years. So to me, we know that money's there. We know that what the parks are going to be created. But why don't we let the developers take that over and maintain that as an HOA? Let's get a neighborhood actually complete. And maybe let's try something new than this one make one model version we've been seeing. I think it's good for rentals. I think it's good for long-term home values. I, as a community member, would love to see really good tenants move in there. I've been managing rentals in Sandy since two thousand and nine. And when I moved out here, I'm committed to finding good people who want to live here. So yeah, that's, that's kind of my two cents. I'm really excited about the opportunity. I think the alternative is inevitable, which is just a ton of duplexes or kind of the same thing we've seen and the same thing that's been done and the same thing that people aren't super happy about. So if we can kind of think out of the box, I think, and everybody get on board, I think this is a really good opportunity to show the community that we can do something different, designed by locals, managed by locals, and provide, you know, and, and, and fits within the budget for locals as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll give it another minute here, or not a minute, but a few more seconds. It's raining really hard out there, by the way, at least at my house in Sandy. I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, very well. We will move on to testimony. If you are against the proposal, opponent testimony. Again, it's raise your hand in Zoom, star nine on your phone. Kelly will remind you to state your name and your address for the record. And I may add that if you can keep your comments moving along, so we get his, get everybody's voice tonight.
Okay, I have one so far. I might pronounce this wrong, my apologies. It's Mary Diami. And please state your name and address for the record. And you'll need to unmute.
My name's Jason Diami. I'm Mary's husband. We live at four one sixty-five Southeast Vista Loop Drive here. Few other concerns that I had from conversations earlier today was, has anybody looked at the impact of the traffic in the actual city of Sandy? Has, has anybody thought about what that's going to do to the infrastructure? We're already, seems like we're already at max capacity for that. So adding these extra vehicles on the roads at these times is going to not just congest this, this intersection out here, but what's it going to do to the actual city? Is that a, is that something that has been looked at? I guess is, was one of my questions. And the other, one of the other ones is the wastewater treatment. Why are we waiting till now before we upgrade this? I understand that, you know, part of the development is to, to help pay for that, but why are we waiting till, till these developments come around? The next one is the, the preservation of the open space that we have out here. There's already that FSH that can't be built on. So is that part of that preservation of the open space? Is that included in that? I didn't hear if that was or not. And do we need, does the city of Sandy need more apartments in this location? Do they, do we have to put them in this location? Or can we, can they put them in, find another more suitable place that's not impacting the current residents as much as this one is? I appreciate the, the reduction of the apartment building right behind my house. But again, is that, is this the actual best place for that? Or, I mean, even the planning of it, why does it need to be right behind Barton High's house? Is there a reason that it's here versus not in the very back of this complex? The, I guess the thing that is hard for me to swallow is why do the current residents of this community need to? I, I guess, what is the right thing to do here? What, why do we need to, to suffer or lose part of what we have worked so hard for, for somebody else to gain? And where do we, where do we compromise on that? And I understand he's talking about bringing the level of that apartment complex down. But at what point are we actually losing more than we're gaining? And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person up is Lisa Hall. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hall and I live at one eight two six five Southeast Vista View Court. I was one of the neighbors that attended the informal meeting this morning. So I learned a lot there and I've learned more this evening. And I guess probably my biggest disappointment is what Jason expressed. Most of the people that live in this neighborhood have worked all their lives to be able to afford to live in this neighborhood and enjoy the beauty that, and peace and quiet that it provides. And so to see these developments, yeah, they're, they're going to be really nice for, for some people. Although I'm not too sure about the people that butt up against Highway twenty-six or butt up against the RV lot. So, you know, it, there could be some nice homes, but it's, it really takes our neighborhood down a notch. And we've worked all our lives to be where we are today. A lot of us are retired. Another comment is, tonight I, I learned that Vista Loop, a third of it will be improved. So the eastern, eastern end of Vista Loop. But I'm not so sure that residents in these new developments will only use a third of Vista Loop. You know, as you may know, Vista Loop is like a half-moon street. There are two entrances, one on the west end, one on the east end. And if the whole street is not improved, it's, it's narrow and has no sidewalks. And anyway, I doubt that people will only use the east entrance that would live in these developments. Also, I wrote an email and sent it to everybody yesterday. And most of my concerns were related to traffic safety with the influx of people. And I, I wanted to make sure that my email was received. But I have, I have concerns today. Basically, when I leave home, I, I'm kind of rolling the dice because Highway twenty-six, the traffic moves at greater than fifty-five miles an hour. And in order to leave and come back to my home, I have to sit in a left-hand turn lane with traffic on both sides of me whizzing by at sixty miles an hour. So it already feels unsafe. And I worry about bringing in a hundred and sixty-eight more households and not making improvements. And so, you know, I suggested something as simple as lowering the speed limit from fifty-five to forty-five. There are lots of businesses and lots of people that live here. And this would be more people. So, you know, does it really have to be fifty-five miles an hour? I know the speed limit was dropped on the west side of Sandy to forty-five. I, I think that's a reasonable safety measure to take on the east end as well. I know that's probably not just a city thing. It's probably a highway decision as well. And then on the east entrance to this development proposed, I know that, you know, if you're making a right turn off of Highway twenty-six onto Vista Loop, there used to be a, what I guess is termed a slip lane, and it was like a highway off-ramp. And so you could exit Highway twenty-six, make a right-hand turn onto Vista Loop at a high rate of speed, not putting yourself in danger to the through traffic on twenty-six that's moving at a, a pretty fast pace. And then there was a recent improvement in light of this development, which turned that highway exit into a hard right turn. And there's no right turn lane. And so now I cringe every time I have to make a right turn there. My husband and I, we pull a camp trailer and we often come home that way. And there's no place to get over to negotiate that turn at a very low rate of speed. And through traffic is kind of frightening. So bring in more people and it gets worse. And then also the parking analysis that I read online about Vista Loop, it indicated that there would be no on-street parking. And so my question is, what steps would be taken to enforce that? You know, we deal with a lot of on-street parking on the west end of Vista Loop. And it's unsightly, it's unsafe, et cetera. So I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we'll try to field some of these questions, staff will, but there's, for two people testifying, there's been like eleven, I think, or nine. I've written most of them down. I don't think we'll probably get to all those, just, I mean, just for time's sake, but we can't answer some of them. The next person up is Bart. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is John Barmetler and I live at four one six one three Southeast Vista Loop Drive. I'm the next door neighbor to Jason over here at the end of the block. The apartment buildings are my, probably my biggest concern. I don't want them, I don't care if you level to one story. I don't want a apartment building backed up to the back of my house. And I'll repeat something that's been going around. Would any of you offer up your homes to put a three-story apartment building right next to your property? Seriously? I find it, I find it preposterous. I did send emails out to all of you yesterday. I wanted to make sure you were aware that I'm very upset about the whole thing. I did send it to planning, so you'll probably get it back around through that angle. So you will get the, the opportunity to read my fine composition. Yeah, the, another real concern for me is where you have this, the Knapp Street exit cut out onto Vista Loop here, it's going to be pointing right into my front windows and my bedroom. And, you know, if you could move that thing, that would be huge. Because that's just going to be, you know, car after car after car just shining in the windows. And that is, I know it's a personal thing. You got one guy complaining about it, but, you know, come on. You know, and most of our community are retired. They're, they're people that work, like everybody's been saying, they've worked all their lives. They got these beautiful views and everything. I don't doubt that we need more housing for people that can't afford the higher end of the living. And the thing that upsets me is you want to put this beautiful tract in there, but to make it work, you have to put an apartment building in there. to make it work, you have to put an apartment building in there to subsidize the funds to make the infrastructure work. I mean, to me, that just tells you this is the wrong place to be doing this. You know, go find a place, you can apartments in where you have access to the city and all that in a more desirable location or away from other people's property lines. It's just insane. Let's see, is that about it? Yeah, I'm not going to repeat all the other stuff that I had, but it's, the one thing I do want to point out is, is, let's see, where is it? Let's see. I think I, I think Shelley was saying something about the project was one of the features of it is it was giving multiple housing in it. But you're justifying having multiple housing in this planned development by saying that that's a feature of it. So to me, that's kind of circular. It's like, it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm going to end it at that. I'm terribly disappointed. You'll see that in my letter, I'm sure. So that's the end of all I got to say.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person up is Todd Springer. Please repeat your name and address for the record.
Todd Springer, address is 18519 Ortiz Street. I think my biggest concern is, is the schools and the size of the classrooms right now. My grandson went to school. He lives with us. You know, I think the national average is about 21 kids in the kindergarten class. Last year he had 23 in his class, which doesn't seem like a ton, but imagine that kindergarten teacher trying to teach 23 children kindergarten age. You know, if we add 168 homes in this area, you know, you're, you're looking at 700 plus people. You know, people live four to six people, you know, in a home. That's also going to create, you know, 500 new vehicles in, on this street, which, you know, I, I would like to see something happen as far as controlling the speed on the street too, you know? Hopefully some speed bumps or something to keep the vehicle speed down. I've got a grave concern about my five grandchildren that, that come over quite frequently and play in my yard. And, and when I'm out doing yard work and there's cars doing 45, 50 miles an hour down Vista Loop, it's, it's very concerning. And, and obviously this is going to bring a lot more children to the neighborhood. So my biggest concern is the safety of the children that, that come here and, and that they've got a good opportunity to go to school and not have, you know, 30 plus kids in a kindergarten class. We're getting run over on Vista Loop because cars are screaming down the street. Thank you all for your time and your consideration. You know, I just, I just hope that there's some of those safety features are built in to, to this development. I know that, that I, I think the development looks great. I appreciate Matt coming out today. I wish I could have been there. I happen to be working in Seattle today, so I didn't get a chance to meet him. Seems like a real personable guy and, and I think, you know, they'll do a good job there. But I think it's, it's up to us, up to you all as commissioners to make sure that, that the community is safe as well. So I appreciate all your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I see no more hands raised for the opponent testimony.
Okay. We will give opportunity then for just neutral testimony. If you are not in favor or you just have, are against it, have a comment or question to enter into the, into the record again. Raise hand button, zoom star nine on your phone.
Okay, we got somebody 503-516-7629-7629. Please state your name and address to the record. You will have to unmute your phone. There we go.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. My name is John Andrew and I live on 18509 Ortiz Street. I'm coming in neutrally today after meeting with Mac and our neighbors. And taking the pressure off Mac a little bit and putting it on our commissioners. I'm just asking you to listen to the area people and their concerns. Mac has really gone above and beyond with some really great plans of this development and I applaud him for that. We did have concerns with an apartment building right at the top of Ortiz Street, which is a very small junction there with Vista Loop. And our concern being that a three-story apartment would render itself along the whole perimeter, 800 feet up along the length of Ortiz Street. I mean, Vista Loop, that's an awfully big building. Now Mac has said that they plan to, you know, put foliage and stuff to try to accommodate, you know, those, that discretion. There's currently a two-level apartment building on Ortiz Street. Some of the neighborhood concerns have been that just recently there was a, the police and SWAT was had to move on to the apartments west of, east of Vista Loop. So of course you have a lot of aged and retired neighbors here who have concerns about once you add this apartment building. There could be other levels of crime and, and stuff like that. We're already off 26. So the level, also the concern about the traffic. So Max has been a stand-up guy and I'll, I'll give him that. And with Tracy's help and his engineer and Ray, they've been a great team. I like what they're trying to do. But it really comes back down to you guys thinking about all the things that are the concerns. It's not just a bunch of angry people who don't want development housing for people. We're just asking you to hear the concerns and understand that it's a small road. We've been used to having less traffic. We've been used to having less people. We're talking a large amount of people in a small, small area. So why would there not be concerns? So just take that stuff into consideration when you pass on to the council, your recommendation. Our concerns and your own concerns that you would have in your neighborhood, like Todd brought up, maybe a speed bump or something like that. But I do again, want to thank Mac and his team for coming out and taking the time to be a complete gentleman and meet with us today. And to address and speak on behalf of the neighbors. I still personally have a concern with a three-story apartment right at the top of my street is aesthetically unpleasing to this whole area. And I'm afraid the city will start a trend that we won't be able to come back from. And of course I talked to Mac and like every developer, they, he's a great guy. I want to hold him to that HOA that he says he wants to keep in place because he's personally invested in this. But I know of several developments that the city, and we all know that has dissolved HOAs. And then the city and the taxpayers end up absorbing all the costs associated with the maintenance and all the utility costs that go with that. So that's really my only concerns and I thank everybody for taking my letters. If I would have known better not to send them, I wouldn't have wasted your time with that. But thank you again for volunteering your time because I know it's, it's time consuming. So thank you very much.
With that, Chairman Crosby, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you for handling that frustrate, Kelly. All right, Shelley, we'll turn it to you for a recap.
Yep. So first I just want to reiterate that all of the emails and letters that we've received up through this morning have been put in the public record and were put in front of the planning commission. So if you did send something, you know, since the agenda got published, don't worry, that has been put in front of planning commission. I, let's see, so there was a question about an HOA. Yes, the applicant is proposing an HOA to maintain all of that private open space. Somebody asked about, you know, has the applicant looked at traffic? With a project like this, we do require a traffic impact analysis performed by a traffic engineer hired by the applicant and then reviewed by a third-party city traffic engineer. So that was required for this application. Let's see. Somebody brought up, you know, changing the speed limit. I agree with that, but that is a different process than a land use application. And some of the things that would be put in with this development, like a sidewalk along Highway 26 and that welcome to Sandy sign, those are what we call traffic calming devices, which kind of signal to drivers like, okay, I'm getting into an urban area. I'm, you know, kind of moving out of the highway area into an urban area and I need to slow down. And so it does slow down traffic and kind of spread cars farther apart. Somebody asked about how parking enforcement is going to be done through the normal parking enforcement and policing procedures that currently exist in Sandy. Somebody asked about, I think, well, a couple of people asked about, you know, why this area, you know, why, why here and why not somewhere else? And that's because land everywhere is really expensive. In large part because Oregon does have the urban growth boundary. It makes land values incredibly high everywhere. And that's one of the big contributing factors to why Oregon has one of the, I don't want to say worst because I don't like negative words, but one of the most concerning housing markets in the country. Somebody else brought up schools. That's under the jurisdiction of the school district. Unfortunately, it's not something that planning commission can take into account when they are reviewing these land use applications. But I will say that multifamily homes statistically have fewer children than single-family homes. And so if that's a concern, actually introducing multifamily housing as opposed to keeping it all, single-family housing would actually have fewer children. When Mac brought up that he had that neighborhood meeting with the neighbors and it sounds like it went well and it was productive, that makes my little planner heart so happy. I love that kind of collaboration and that kind of dialogue. Because I think it's really important to remember that there are no enemies, right? We're just all people wanting to do what's right and wanting the best for Sandy. I would have loved if a neighborhood meeting could have happened a little sooner, but still great, still awesome. And I just wanted to make two more points before I pass it off to Kelly. So the fact of the matter is the United States Constitution protects property rights and economic viability of land. And so what that means is that if, if a land owner and a developer get together and say, we want to make this land as economically viable as possible, the city is not allowed to say point blank, a priori, no, you can't develop the land. And then with apartments, this is not a concern that's unique to Sandy. This is everywhere. There's a lot of concern from people, you know, do we want apartments in our neighborhoods? There's a lot of concerns about crime and traffic and, you know, adjacent property values. And I would just encourage you to, you know, do some research on what is actually the case with apartments. Cause you might be surprised, there's a lot of really great research from multiple research sectors. There's think tanks, the Urban Land Institute has done a lot of great research on multifamily housing. The Harvard Housing Joint Center on Housing Studies, actually I have a friend who works there who does a lot of research on multifamily housing as well as industry, the National Home Builders Association has done a lot of research on multifamily housing. So there's a lot of information out there. And so I would just invite anybody who has those concerns to kind of seek out that information. Okay, I tried to do that quick. Kelly, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I had a few, I had a few other things, not much. I think you did a really good job of bringing up most of the things. Somebody asked the question of additional vehicles in the city of Sandy and each development that occurs has the potential of adding additional vehicles throughout the city of Sandy. I think they're referencing Highway 26. That is true. I will say 159 lot subdivision, which is what Mac's now proposing with the removal of the nine apartment units will have very little impact on the 33,000 daily vehicles that go on Highway 26. It will have an impact on Vista Loop Drive, no doubt about that. But with 33,000 vehicles as of 2011, so it's probably more like closer to 40,000 vehicles now. It's not, you're not going to see a noticeable difference on Highway 26. We are under, undergoing a TSP revision right now, so those numbers are being looked at. We just had traffic counts actually done, I think in September or October. I have not seen, we are waiting for the traffic to return to normal because it was really down April through June because of COVID and people not moving by vehicle as much and working from home, but it's, it's like 90 something percent of what it was on Highway 26 and they're doing some adjustments. So you'll see that in a TSP revision that's coming before the city of Sandy in the next year to year and a half. A few other things, the wastewater treatment plan and why that didn't happen before. You would have to contact the public works director or city manager. I don't know why it wasn't. Same thing with speed bumps or any traffic calming measures for those to be implemented, especially on a collector street such as Vista Loop. You have to contact our public works director and they do, there's a way to actually do a speed limit test. No on-street parking, that will be enforced by our code enforcement officer. Since it's a collector street, there's no on-street parking. Lowering the speed limit is actually a speed study investigation that has to be done through the state of Oregon, ODOT. I do agree with Shelley, it would be nice for it to be lowered. I've mentioned it to ODOT in the past, not only in this section of town, but also through our downtown and other sections. And it's never really gone anywhere, but I would ask that any citizens that do find that to be an important thing to ask the city council to make it more of a pressing issue with ODOT. And I think we could probably at least accomplish getting the speeds zone done, speed zone investigation done. Just looking through my notes here, sorry. Yeah, the school size question, that's Oregon Trail School District question. You would have to refer to Tim Bellinger over at the school district who's the finance director, I'm sure he'd, or Julia Montez. Those would probably be the most appropriate people to ask that question about. I will say, not to get into that too much, but property and additional property taxes and school excise tax, which is collected with each building permit, actually help fund additional teachers and additional classroom expansion. Not advocating for the development because of that, but I am just trying to put some facts out there that the more housing you actually see and the more development, it actually increases the money that the Oregon Trail School District gets. Preservation of open space. The, so somebody stated that you cannot develop in the FSH. That is actually not correct. You cannot develop within the restricted development area portion of the FSH, which means you cannot develop in any areas that are wetlands or 25% slopes or greater within the FSH. But you could develop in the FSH. It's just an overlay. It's a assessment area. It's not a restricted area. In addition to that, most developments, as I stated at the November meeting that we see include, even if they don't include actual developed buildings in, in the FSH, they always include platted lot acreage in the FSH. So if you saw this without the PD concept, I'm sure you would see a lot of lots that are being plotted within the FSH area. Even if there's portions of that FSH area that can't technically be developed, it then becomes a code enforcement, enforcement nightmare for the city of Sandy. It has in multiple spots all around town. Because what happens is people turn that natural area that people are concerned about being wildlife habitat into their backyards because it is their property. And so they put lawns and sprinkler systems and, you know, accessory buildings. And soon enough, it does get damaged because of that. So the proposal before the planning commission tonight would not impact the FSH at all because they're not proposing platted lots in the FSH. But that would be allowed if Mac wanted to propose it. And the only other one I have is the peace and quiet comment. I respect that. I understand that. But as I stated in November, this area is in the urban growth boundary. And so at some point it will be developed. I understand that has big impacts on existing people that live on Vista Loop and I feel for them. But this area is in the urban growth boundary and does have development potential. So whether it's this development or another development, at some point it will be developed. So whether it's this development or another development, at some point it will be developed. And sorry, I said that was my last point, but it's not. One last point is that with the new evidence that Mac said during his testimony tonight, I'm hoping that following this meeting, he submits additional details on that. Reducing that apartment complex and taking off the third story. That would put the density back to what's allowed under the base zoning district. And therefore, when you're reviewing this tonight, planning commissioners, please remember that that new fact basically eliminates the density bonus or the density increase that Mac was seeking. And therefore you do not have to determine tonight whether it's an outstanding development or not. I still think it is an outstanding development, staff has said that. I know people disagree with that, but we think it is an outstanding development. However, that is not even part of the consideration if he's not asking for a density increase. So I just wanted to remind everybody that and let everybody know that is kind of an interesting 11th and a half hour change. I think it's a good offer by Mr. Even. And if you have any questions about that, we can talk about it some more, but that's all my comments.
Okay. Well, Tracy, can you give us a quick rebuttal before we take a break?
Sure, yeah, I'll just say a few words. I just want to emphasize that Mac intends to have an HOA, you know, maintaining the common properties. And, you know, he has indicated that he intends to retain ownership of the apartments. And so that's a, he has an extra vested interest in making sure that the HOA is, holds together because he'll be, you know, owning those properties. I also want to just point out that, you know, the, the other single family residents who are now in this new neighborhood, if it's approved, will also have an additional interest in making sure the apartments are maintained properly. So it, it won't be the burden of, you know, the police necessarily or the adjacent neighbors. Because there'll be lots of eyes if there's a problem. But, you know, as Shelley mentioned, there really isn't any proof that, to show that apartments are particularly a problem. It's just an alternative housing. So we understand there's a concern about change in this neighborhood and that's undeniable. It's currently, you know, kind of a rural road. And so with that, with this development, there will be change. And with that change, the, you know, road will get improved. And that's the only way it gets improved, actually, with that change that occurs. So I think, you know, I guess, you know, I, I would mention that I respect the opinion of John Andretti, who spoke as a neutral party. His daughter and I started acting together years and years ago. And so I've known him a little bit and I, I really feel that him kind of accepting to some degree this development could go a long way for allowing you or, you know, to feel better about approving this development. I think, you know, from my perspective, I think it has a lot of benefits. And the alternative, if it isn't approved, probably won't have all of those amenities and benefits. And you might get something that really isn't as great, you know, with the possibly 170 duplex lots out there. So it's, it's, the alternative doesn't look as good from my perspective. So I'll just leave you with that. Appreciate your time and we rest. Oh, somebody just hit my wall. I don't know what's going on. So maybe it is a good time for a break.
Yep, you can check it out, Tracy. And unless there's any objection from fellow commissioners, take a break of about, we say five minutes, let's try and stick to it and we'll be back. Okay, I think everybody is back in the room. Yep. So we will pick it up from here. Let me just. Everybody's on and hearing and so forth. Kind of hard to hard to tell when you're just speaking to a quiet room. Okay, our task. Our task ultimately is to forward the proposal to city council with our recommendations, our adjustments, our druthers, the things that we would rather have on it. We are not making the final decision. And as I said at the beginning, it's kind of an awkward thing because we're used to doing all that. The city, or yeah, city staff has given us several questions to answer, to help them be able to communicate to city council what the planning commission's feelings or thoughts were on particular issues that this proposal that surfaced with this proposal. Some of them are the very special variances and so forth. We will eventually, I believe what we need, what I want us to do is to address those questions. Where we will struggle, as I'm just looking at it myself, is when we address some of those questions, we may come down on one side of the other. And I don't know that we need to take a pole vault. We can just, I think, kind of work it out, get a general feeling of the consensus of the planning commission on the issues. Where you'll struggle, I know where I would, and I'm just gonna pick one of, the question is, does the planning commission recommend allowing a minimum of average lot with less than 60 feet? Okay, well, let's say that we we feel no, we would, we're not comfortable with that. And I'm not trying to put words in her mouth. Well, if we're not, that really changes the whole design of the thing. And it's not our position or our task to fix that. We would just be passing on to city council, here's a concern that we have on this. And they've asked the planning commission to give it our planning eyes, our proposal things, and that's what we'll do. And they're going to have to be like planning commissioners when they get it and make the decision. So with that, I know.
Can I add one, can I add one wrinkle? If you guys feel that there's questions that you don't believe need to be answered or that you feel quite frankly, you just don't feel like you need to discuss it, that's fine as well. As Jerry explained, these were just kind of our first attempt to try to guide you towards giving a recommendation by kind of getting your thoughts on these different questions. But as I told Jerry, I will take ownership because I put together the question. Shelley did a phenomenal job putting together most of the document. I put together a lot of the questions. It was an attempt to do something a little different than we've done in the past. And it might not be a very good attempt, I'll just admit it. So in the future, I might do it a little, we might do it a little bit differently. But just recognize that if some of the questions you don't feel are really that important to answer, I would just quickly move on. Because I, it wasn't intended to like have the commission have a big discussion about every question. It was more just to try to help the discussion.
Okay, thanks. And in, in your defense though, Kelly, I think there are questions that we would anticipate the city council asking. I can see them sitting there saying, well, what did the planning commission think about such and such? So I think you anticipated, John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'll be uncharacteristic on my time, last swan song, we'll call it for now. But if House Bill, this is a question for Kelly or staff. But if the House Bill 2001 essentially kills single-family home zoning, how many of these questions are moot point come when this is into the code or June, right?
So it's my understanding with House Bill 2001 and allowing duplexes and single-family residential zoned areas. All of the development standards say this, stay the same. So lot size, lot width, everything like that stays the same. The, the only thing that's different is basically you have two dwelling units. You know, one single-family lot.
I thought I heard somebody earlier say something about apartment buildings as well. Okay.
Yeah, that's for, yeah, so we're, we're what's known as, I think, a middle city. So we're 10, over 10,000 population, but under 25,000. So the only thing we have to adopt is duplexes. We could choose to do something more, but cities over 25,000 also have to allow, I think, triplexes and even fourplex units are greater, so that's apartment buildings.
Okay.
It will have impact on parking more than anything else because each each duplex will have the same parking requirements as a single-family home currently does. And that's, that's legislated by the House Bill.
Right. And another issue, John, is the timing of it. This one would probably, if it gets approved, would be approved before House Bill 2001 has to kick in in the city of Sandy.
Right.
So it would, at that point, I'm assuming it would be like grandfathered in.
That's actually not true.
Oh, really?
Any lot, so the house I'm sitting in right now, which is a single-family home, after House Bill 2001 passes, if I choose to convert this house and I live in, I live in Sandy and I live on SFR land, if I choose to convert this house to a duplex, it's allowed.
Okay.
And I don't need to provide any more parking. I, you know, that, I think there's going to be a challenge probably, and Chris can answer this if you guys are interested in it, in subdivisions that have CCNRs that don't allow duplexes. But I think my guess is that those will be overruled. But I think that's the only caveat that I don't know the answer to yet.
Okay.
The CCRs would not control the cities, the scope of the city's authority. That's a private contract between the homeowners, they can sue each other under the CCNRs, but the city would have to permit it.
Okay. Don, you raised your hands, I know you've got some comments you wanted to share, so you can kick off our, our discussion. Your mic's not on, or I'm not hearing you. I'm not, anybody hearing him?
I'm not hearing him, Sheriff.
Did you replace that headset?
Nothing. We got them for once, I think.
Yeah, we heard you earlier.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just put the headset down, I'll just use the computer as long as you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, good. Yeah, I did talk to Jerry, you know, this has been really kind of interesting for those particularly in the audience. You know, I've been on the planning commission about 15 years and so, you know, we've been through a lot of different things. And so I guess why I want to bring some thoughts here, and part of this is my experience and some of the stuff I've kind of been involved in. So I may not talk on some of the specific individual concerns that some of you have expressed. We may touch on that towards the end, but I like maybe approach of more global. You know, the total area of the, of the views is zoned, same type residential, we know that. Now, this to me is just kind of a name only, you know, we could call it Zone R0. Because we have R1, R2, and R3. So it's the criteria that's in the code that's important. And I'm, we're well aware, House Bill 2001 being passed and the city needs to allow duplexes to be built in its zone. But it's been stated, and I just want to be careful here, that with the passage of this, the single-family zoning is no longer applicable. To me, that's kind of in name only. You know, we, we, I would just suggest that just because you have a duplexes allowed, doesn't mean their single-family detached homes are not going to be built or allowed. That's got the supply and demand. So, you know, in the last six months, we've talked a lot about this. And I just feel we've tipped over the edge a little bit with this idea that, oh my God, we gotta do this, we're going to have 170 duplexes. Worst case scenario. You know, so I just think we need to kind of keep that in mind. And it's up to the developer to figure out what's, you know, financially viable. And, you know, needed housing refers to all housing needs, not just higher density housing needs. Which is why we have single-family residential. For the public, you know, frequently they're going to change words like affordable housing versus needed housing, and they're different concepts. This is not an affordable housing project, it's not being proposed that way. The fact it has some, some apartments, et cetera, and you can interpret that. But essentially, it's an attempt to essentially put on a piece of land dwellings that currently are not, you know, permitted based on the current zoning. So, you know, the market's going to determine, you know, what's going to happen here. And we don't know that, but we're, what we have is we do have the development code, we do have the zone map, we have the comprehensive plan. And we're in Sandy, we're not in Portland, we're not in Gresham. And I really emphasize, we need to listen to our citizens. Because there's a reason they, they kind of come to Sandy. I want to remind the commission of the urbanization study that we completed in February 2017. This is what was done to support the urban growth boundary expansion. In the analysis upfront, we determined, staff determined really, that there was a defined deficit of about 277 acres in SFR and R1 zone lands. For R2 and R3, there was a net surplus of about 10. So let me emphasize that, we had a net deficit of 277,000 in SFR and R1, we had a net surplus in R2 and R3. So that was one of the major goals. So we, we did the urban growth expansion and we added 200, 310 acres during growth boundary. And that was all in zones SFR and R1 to meet that need. No acres were added at all in R2 and R3. My point is, there's all kinds of R2 and R3 land around, you know, unavailable. And that, I believe that we do have a, that needed housing for some people who want to stay around Sandy might be in a bigger lot and maybe a little bigger house. So we don't need to make every project, or think of every project, you know, that way. And in this chicken project, it essentially de facto re-zoned 78% of the land from SFR to R1, but mainly R2 and R3. Now, the developer could have done it differently, they could have committed drawn lines. Because you can buy, buy, buy the, buy the map and the lot sizes and the frontages and all that, you pretty well say which, you know, which zone would we, would it be if you were to rezone it? So it's important to understand that what we have, the PD essentially is a de facto rezoning without any analysis being provided to us what the effect is on the urban growth. And, you know, if you were to do this as a rezone, you'd have to do all that analysis to disclose that. Now, I had struggled with, you know, if I'm for it or against it, but, you know, what is our valuation criteria? I believe I asked specifically at the last meeting what our decision criteria were. And and, you know, Kelly basically asked Chris, you know, it's documented in minutes to, to kind of give us some information on that and to prepare a memo for the second stack report. I haven't, I haven't seen the memo, so I might have missed something. But so if I'm just kind of flying on my own reading here of the, of the city code. So I, I thoroughly expect to be browbeat about the mountain and ears by, by Chris and Mike Robinson and and other folks. But I was, I'm left on my own, so I'm going to do my best. And, you know, the review process, you know, it's contained in 1764-100. And staff has covered that, you know, well, the first one is consistently, they attended the chapter and, you know, they make some comments there. But the second one is compliance with the general provisions, development standards and application provisions of, of the 1764 code. The key for me is, is B. Okay? Because if you read, if you read then 1764-30, A, that is titled Variation for Development Code Standards Generally. And it says, the development standards of the base zone, which would be SFR overlay zone or planned development overlay apply unless they're superseded by the standards of this chapter, which is the PD chapter, or modified during this planned review. So the development is, says the development process, you know, can allow modification of development standards that are dimensional or quantitative, i.e. 7,500 foot lot size, 60 foot frontage. You know, anything that, you know, fits of course into, into that. So it seems to mean like our decision space is, is basically right here. The developer has brought his max units back to 159, or stamped from Kelly, we don't need to look at that. But the base zone, you know, is still SFR. But the base zone, you know, is still SFR. And, you know, it appears to me this planning commission and ultimately the city council, you know, have the latitude and responsibility to make a determination on each of these modifications to the sandy development codes in the underlying zone. I think this is, of course, the basis of Kelly's questions he had there, because there, those questions, a lot of them are simply centered around quantitative standards in the SFR, you know, basically in that zone area. And so, you know, in the staff report, you know, he asked the developer to detail what the modifications were, you know, to kind of help us out. And so, you know, that's in the staff report, and sorry, on page is thirty-six. Excuse me, that's where the recommendations are. So, you know, section seventeen thirty-four ten, this is the code for single family residential, says, you know, this it says that row houses and multifamily dwellings are not listed as permitted outright uses, and we're being asked, you know, do we think they should be there or not? The applicant is proposing both of these, and it's not shown, and I feel he has not shown that doing this provides any advantages or development solely as SFR. In fact, I would suggest the urbanization study has shown that developing land with physical characteristics such as having seventy-five hundred square foot minimum lot sizes is needed housing in the urban growth boundary. The next one is seventeen thirty-four thirty, which is the lot size, is required to be, uh, greater than seventy-five hundred square feet. The majority of the lots that are, are planted at this are, are on the lower views, and of course, they're on the north end. They're the ones that have the nice view of Mount Hood. Those are, you know, ones that if you wanted to plat down into the, yes, uh, the, uh, fish zone, you could. There's no real reason to, because that would just get you a bigger lot, and you don't need to plant it down there to get the minimum lot. So, you know, they have done that, but I just look at it as, just practically just a smart thing to do. So, you know, I, I did do some work, and basically eight percent of the, of the lots, eight percent of the units are ending up as SFR, and the ninety-two percent, um, are, are going into these other zones. Primarily into, um, R two and R three, uh, the upper views pretty much is all, except for one lot. Is R two and R three with lot sizes somewhere between thirty-four hundred square feet and forty-five hundred square feet. So, you know, section seventeen thirty-four thirty requires a minimum lot width of sixty feet, and the applicant's question obviously there, away this. Given that many lots do not meet the, the requirement, the applicant urges that this requirement not, could not possibly be met. Well, clearly, it's not possible to meet it if you start with small lots. It's a circular argument. The applicant, well, it's a small lots, and because of that, they cannot meet the sixty foot. So hence, they ask for an exemption to the sixty foot, so it's like a chicken and an egg. So, you know, I don't think this is a valid reason, you know, for that modification of the, of the SFR code. Uh, section seventeen thirty-four thirty requires interior setback to seven and a half feet, and they're requesting it be reduced to five. Uh, if you look at the design, a, a large areas of, of this, particularly in the upper views, each have a large row of houses along the street. The applicant does not provide rationale on why they, you know, doing this necessarily. So I'll know, I agree with them, could come up with, they're choosing to do this, just get more houses in. I mean, it's not a valid reason for the modification. They haven't provided one. Seventeen thirty-four thirty requires that the rear setbacks be twenty feet. And they're requesting ever ten feet, fifteen feet on different lot size, lot numbers in several different places. And the athlete doesn't provide any rationale on based on site conditions why this is required. So I don't think it's a valid reason for modifying that code. That gets us to the last one, which is actually seventeen one hundred, one twenty land division, which requires the four hundred foot maximum block length. This is a little bit of concern, I just throw out to staff to think about. Um, this is procedural, I think, but, you know, basically in the staff report, it says they're requesting three variances. That represents the three streets, but the variances, the, the two variances that are listed are, are got in relation to that. So to modify the block length, is that truly a variance? Or, because we're, we're outside now of the SFR code, we're in a completely separate section of the code. Is this, is this, should this have been listed as a third special variance, third, fourth, and fifth, whatever? I'm just thinking on a procedural standpoint, because if it is, uh, that's how you can run into trouble on these. You, you get challenged on your, on your procedure. So, that, that's just a, a question kind of, kind of for staff. I didn't, I did write some comments down, um, that related to the outstanding, not outstanding, or whatever. Uh, but I won't go over those because of what the applicant has, has basically done. What I would just suggest is, I've looked through all of those, like staff listed them in, in forty-nine of the report. And, you know, they're all basically, they're statements, but there, you know, there's nothing to compare to. There's, what would this look like if it was developed as SFR? Would you still have the fish overlay? I'm sure you would. You wouldn't have a mix of housing types, but, you know, there's plenty of places in Sandy's owned R two and R, R three, probably just to the north of the upper views is, is owned R two. So, you know, we're begging to de facto, you know, rezoning. The recreation areas, they say you may not have them. I don't know, if you really look at where they're at, they end up on odd pieces of the property where you just got a little piece, you can't develop a lot. And so you have this kind of little, little odd piece. So, you know, yeah, they're nice the way they're proposed, but to say that they wouldn't be there if it was developed with SFR, there's nothing to compare to. You know, things like planting nice plants, you know, with, with pollinator species, well, you can do that anywhere. So, you know, in summary, you know, I don't feel the proposal is outstanding necessarily in design, because it may be outstanding if you did it, you know, in a different way. That would occur in this, in, in particularly using SFR. And I believe the development standards of the base code, overlying code, planned overlay need to apply and not be modified during the, you know, the plan review process. So I have some comments on some individual things, but I, I'm just going to stop there. Jerry, thanks for the time. I want to thank all the commissioners for your patience. But my intent was to organize my thoughts. I actually wrote them down three times, rehearsed it. And now I'll just, I'll answer questions and not be jumping in and back and forth. That's, that's not my intent. Thanks, Jerry.
Well, thank you, Don. Appreciate that, um, thoughts and energy put into it. We can just move on to
Can I, Jerry, can I address one question that Don had, because I think it was directed to Shelley and I, and I was looking at the code right when he was speaking about, and I think it was a good point. Um, but he asked, um, like block length, if that should have been a special variance instead of just one of the variations and to development standards. Um, I think it's just a variation to development standard, not a special variance. Um, if you look at seventeen sixty-four thirty A, the second sentence says, the planned development and specific area plan, which I don't know why it says that second one in here, but it does. So it says the planned development and specific area plan review processes allow modification of development code standards, so that's all of chapter seventeen, that are dimensional and or quantitative. And then it goes on to add some other caveats to that about base minimum density, but, um, so that, that's how staff has interpreted this, is that if it's quantitative and it's in the development standards, which is the entirety of chapter seventeen or title seventeen in the Sandy municipal code, then it's just a variation request and not a special variance.
Okay, thanks. So another, another commission, yeah, Ron, I see that hand. Unmute yourself and you're good to go. Where is that button?
There. I think I'm live, hopefully.
Yep.
I will try to be concise and just give my overview. But before I go in, into a little preamble, and that is, it was brought up that if you're not behind this, it was inferred that if you're not behind this, uh, PD, then you're not open-minded. I'm open-minded. I'm coming in with this with, um, it's a little bit hard because there's no room for really adjustments. We're just giving recommendations, so if I come across that, I'm not behind it. I think that there's some, uh, as Kelly, or excuse me, as Tracy Brown said tonight, he said, we're looking for a little more flexibility than what was, um, inferred that was, that is in the typical SFR. And in reviewing this, um, I have my comments based upon outstanding and exceptional. Um, and those are kind of out because that doesn't come into play as we had. But, um, when I went through and looked at it, the, you know, the developer and the people working on the, the carefulness and preserving the natural beauty of, of the area and all its resources, huge kudos. I like the incorporation of the row houses and how they helped to effectively separate the business and residential properties. You know, there's some real things that we haven't seen before, you know, and the row houses in there, I think, are, uh, a nice break with the garages loaded in the back. Um, I love the pu- the pu- the, the common public areas and their amenities. I like the Mandarin pass and the public views of Mount Hood. And that's what the planned development allows for, is for some deviations. My input to the, to, to the commissioners is, I think that, um, and I'm, I'm looking at Shelley here on the screen because I should really come, I'm trying to think of a positive verb I can use here as opposed to a negative, okay? But, um, I believe that the problem I'm having with it is that the deviations are, are a little bit abused. Things have gone too far. You know, if I look at minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred, we upped that a few years ago because of the problems that we encountered in, in the housing on smaller mark, on smaller lots. And so we upped it. And the thing is, is we're not talking about going back to a seven thousand, sixty-five hundred foot lot. Um, I'm looking here today, I made notes, there's fifty lots proposed that are under five thousand. There's, I mean, fifty lots, thirty-four hundred to five thousand square feet. So, I just think that the applicant in terms of being able to quantitative, make quantitative changes, they're a little too drastic for me. All right, and I think that, for example, this comes up of, you know, oh, we're gonna have duplexes everywhere on it. Well, when I was looking at it, I think a duplex on a seventy-five hundred square foot lot would probably give more outside space and be more functional than two separate lots that are, um, thirty-four hundred square feet a piece. So, you know, this coming up of you're gonna take a thirty-four hundred square foot lot if it's proposed, and then turn it into a duplex, I guess you could, on it. Um, I just think the developer has pushed this maximum density past the point of why I could maybe say is decent with the, with the smaller lots. And that's my biggest one, that I mean, I understand the setbacks are because of that. The rear yard setback, side yards, is just to get those lot sizes down. And we are, been told for years of working on this, that impact to schools doesn't matter. The cost of the project isn't something that we're supposed to consider. So I know they're trying to spread the development costs, I understand that, but it's something where we're not supposed to be looking at. But it keeps coming up into the conversation. I'm bringing it up again. And, like I said, I, I like, I think there's a lot of elements that are really good on this and can be built upon. But I'm looking down the road a few years for those, I just find it very hard to envision Sandy, Oregon, um, houses built on thirty-five hundred, four thousand square foot lots, and there's a lot of them, and I'm not talking about the row houses. Because those are what, twenty-two to twenty-six hundred square feet? I'd rather see more row houses than with the little tiny lots. Anyway. Let's see. And the other one is, in terms of kind of spreading around, this one's got a little bit hard, but the upper views versus the lower use, views lots, most of the things we're all talking about is the good stuff, I'm going to say, is down in the lower views. And we have this small connection that is connecting the upper and the lower. If we're trying to make it an exceptional planned areas, take some of that stuff and put it up on the upper lot for people to enjoy more. So I understand it's supposed to be public and everybody can walk down there, but we're just gonna, we just have a really tight street up on top. And my last one, the very last one is, uh, is for the people that are in there. This is, the apartments coming in, it's effectively a rezone. It's kind of always called PD, it's not, but again, we're putting apartments, et cetera. And I wish there was a way for people to have bought in with their property, their life savings. They, they thought this is what, what was going on, and now the, uh, the game of, the game's been changed on them. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Looking for the next commissioner to raise his or her hand for, for your comments. Like this has been helpful to just kind of do one at a time. Okay, Chris?
I'll, I'll be really brief. I don't want to have to re, you know, say everything every other commissioner said. But I, I've been, I've been struggling myself with, um, listening to the presentation and, and rereading the materials for the last couple of weeks about this great concept, uh, that they've offered in front of us, and I do believe it is a great concept personally. And I think it would add great benefit to our community to have such a concept in that location. Um, and I, I do hear the public, and I, I've, I've listened to every person that spoke today and, and the last meeting, and I've read every letter. But what I'm saying is a great concept. I want to put my preference on concept. Uh, when I read the eighteen questions that, that Kelly and, um, Shelley asked of us, I came up with nine distinctive yeses. Um, I came up with six distinctive no's. Uh, that's not eighteen yet, so I'll get into it, but of my six no's, four of them were all around lot size and setbacks. Um, because that's where the concept, uh, is not good in reality to me. Uh, I think, uh, there needs to be a lot of more work done around that, and I, I'm, I'm a businessman, businessman by trait. Um, I've been, I understand profit and loss statements and, and the creation of EBITDA to a bottom line. And I understand that when you make lot sizes bigger, you put less houses, you have less homes, you have less money. Um, and, and that creates a, a loss of, for a developer. Um, but that's not, that's not my concern, uh, in reality. Uh, I, I think it's about creating a, a space that's, uh, adequate for the community and meets the design of our code, and I do not believe in far as space size that it meets that. And I will vote no against those four criterion. Uh, the other one is, um, the, one of the other no's is the right turn that a lot of the public has talked about, and I have read ODOT's recommendation, and I've read Mr. Ards' writing on that, and I do understand the, the quantitative results that have to be studied for that. But I drove that three times at five P M. in my little Subaru Forester. And I gotta tell you, I was pretty nervous. Uh, it, it's, uh, at five o'clock, that's a tough right turn to make. I'm gonna be a no on that one as well. Um, I need, I need that entrance into Vista Loop, um, opened up. I need something changed about it to make it feel safe for drivers. And I know that that traffic study may not say it needs that, Todd, so you might have to educate me a little bit, because I'm not the expert. But I've lived in Sandy for fifteen years. I've driven that road. I've taught my children how to drive on that road. And I don't want my children ever making that turn if this development is built, because it's going to be dangerous the way it is today. And I agree with what all of the people that are in that area state. The, the last four questions are, I'm really undetermined on. Chair, uh, I'm not sure which way to go, and that includes the last question is, will I vote for this uh, PD or not? And, and I gotta say, my answer would be yes, with a lot of conditions tacked on to it. But in its current state, my answer would be no. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Another hand up.
I'm not nearly as organized as the previous three, and I agree with, oh, I I like the concept, I like the neighborhood, I like the mix of all the different uses, I like the open spaces. I live in a planned development in Sandy, and it too is a single-family resident, low-density residential before the planned development went in, and I love my neighborhood, everybody in my neighborhood loves my neighborhood. We have townhomes, we have smaller lot sizes, we have an enormous park, which everybody in the neighborhood uses. We have conservation easements that keeps the natural beauty of the forest in the neighborhood. I, the one thing that my neighborhood does not have that this one has are the apartment buildings. I was really happy to hear that Ray and Mac met with the neighbors this morning, maybe it was a little too late. I don't know what the answer to that question is, but, I mean, I did not like that. I do not like that one apartment building right behind the home of the DME, DMA? However their name is, because it does ruin their property. The way I see it here is, is the only designation that a planned development is allowed in without issue is a village designation. Is that correct, Kelly, Shelley? Because other than that, you have to go through this process. And then you have to answer then the questions of the lot sizes and the widths and I personally don't have a problem with the lot sizes and the widths and given all the amenities that are in this neighborhood. I do not like the right-hand turn off the highway. I know what all the traffic engineers are saying, but it's, it's crazy. I didn't like it before when it was the slip lane, and really, I don't like it now. What else do I have here in a couple notes? I know I can understand the neighbors' issues with the parking on Vista Loop Drive and only because it's a disaster at the other end of the neighborhood, Vista Loop Drive. Now, I know these apartments appear to have more parking, and people have to complain to code enforcement for code enforcement to enforce the parking rules. And most people probably don't, or if they do, then code enforcement's not doing their job. Yeah, I don't, that's kind of where I am.
Thank you, John. Okay, there, Hollis, I can't see your hand when it's off to the side because you've got a narrow screen.
I don't know why it's narrow. Okay, well, first of all, John, I wish you'd spoken more when you were on the commission because I'd really basically say ditto what John said. I thought you did a really nice job there. I guess I'd start, I'd also like to start with saying to the neighbors that I feel for you. I understand that it must be really hard to have a new development going next door when you've lived next to a natural space like that. And I guess I would say that as a planning commissioners, our job isn't isn't to look at that. What it is to look at is, are the developers following the code? And overall, is the development in keeping with what the city is trying to accomplish? And right now, we also have Senate Bill 2001 coming through because the Pacific Northwest is one of the least affordable places in the nation to live. And that's why, for those of you in single-family dwellings, either you or your neighbors might be making your homes into duplexes next spring. So change is on the horizon, and not all of it is change we want to see. But I do want to say that I feel like this developer's worked really hard to put together a really nice plan with a lot of amenities. I was really happy to hear that he met with the neighbors this morning. Also wish it had been sooner, but, but, I mean, from this morning until now is lowered the size of the apartments, I mean, taken them down a whole level and dropped off nine of them. So I think that was a, that was a really nice gesture and compromise. So I guess I look at it in the big picture as a planned development, and I think it's really outstanding. And I know I'm using that word when we don't have to say it, but I do think it's gonna be a beautiful development. And when I think of some of the other developments that I've sat through and they crossed their Ts and dotted their Is and they met the letter of the law. But I think they're horrible to look at, and I certainly wouldn't want to live in one. So I would throw my support behind this, I would recommend it to the city council. My one really big objection or concern is that right turn off of Highway 26. And I have also taken it a few times. I actually took it tonight on my way down the mountain just to see, and I'll tell you, I almost went off where that access road used to be. I almost ended up in the ditch, coming down the mountain in the dark with the fast traffic. So that is something that I think needs to be addressed, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yes, that leaves me.
Yeah.
I was gonna make one comment, I was gonna make one comment, but I'll just go to Todd. It was actually gonna be about the right turn lane, so I'll let Todd go, and then I just had a follow-up to that.
You can talk about it first. Like, I can weigh in my opinion if you'd like.
Heck, no, man, this is your last meeting, you go.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm less concerned about some of the smaller lot sizes than some of my fellow commissioners. I live in a fairly small lot, it's five thousand feet, I have neighbors that are smaller than that and three thousand, so I think that those kinds of lot sizes are more common now, I think that's kind of the direction we're headed. So I recognize that creates some parking problems, but I think the, I think the project is really well thought out. I think they've anticipated a lot of those things like parking issues and, and, I don't know, I like the design. I think they really used the PD provision for what it's intended. Things like the views of Mount Hood are really, I mean, that's why, that's one of the things that makes Sandy so great is all the great views around town. So I think that, I think the design preserves that more than a standard subdivision would. So, yeah, I guess I'm in favor of those elements. I do, I'm sympathetic with the neighbors. And some of the placement of apartment buildings certainly is probably not what they anticipated to be built on an SFR lot, so I get where they're coming from there, it is allowed by the PD code. With regard to that right turn lane, it's been fixed recently by taking out that slip lane, and you sort of trade one safety concern for the other high-speed traffic. If the slip lane were still there, I think people would come up on top of that. The access to the lower views way too fast, and that would be a safety problem. But I hear what people are saying, and I've reviewed the technical analysis, I don't disagree with the applicant. I don't disagree with the city's traffic engineer either from a technical standpoint, I think that's all true. But I also kind of understand where folks are coming from about the comfort of making a right turn. I think that this whole section of Highway 26 is overdue for a speed zone investigation and try to get that speed zone lowered, so I'd definitely be in favor of seeing that happen in a separate process. So, yeah, I think those are my, those are my answers. I guess overall, I'd be in support of the application.
Right, so if I could just add something for clarity, not trying to take an opinion or aside. In the staff report, I helped Shelley write up this section on the right turn lane. There is nothing in the evidence that's been submitted by ODOT or the applicant or our traffic engineer to suggest that the right turn onto Vista Loop needs to be modified. Now, in saying that, you may feel that it's not safe, and there might be some valid concerns that it is not safe. But I don't think this developer should have the onus of paying for additional modifications to that intersection, especially since the property owner, the current property owner, Mr. Picking, who owns the property where the lower views is proposed, already paid for the slip lane to be removed and the intersection to just be modified two years ago. So I think if anybody is going to pay for that intersection to be improved, it should be ODOT. They're the ones that told Mr. Picking how to improve the intersection. He did it to their standards, and now two years later, they're coming back and saying, wait, that wasn't good enough, we want you to improve it again. To me, ODOT should be getting questions, should be getting inquiries from the citizens of Sandy that have concerns with that intersection. The city of Sandy might be able to partner with ODOT on that, but I also don't think it's really the city of Sandy's responsibility. I really do feel, I feel strongly about this, as a citizen of Sandy who pays taxes myself, this is an ODOT-created issue. They installed the slip lane to begin with, making an unsafe intersection. They then asked a property owner to fix their situation, which he did. And now they're saying to that same property owner essentially, fix it again two years later. So I just want to make a very clear and demonstrative comment that this is an ODOT issue. I don't disagree that there is an issue, even though the evidence doesn't support that, but I really don't think it's Mr. Even's obligation to fix it. I really think it's ODOT.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess I will weigh in, I have not written my comments out, I probably should have. I've been thinking about them a lot. And first off, I, I will say, as several of you had, that the overall design and appearance of the plan is wonderful. And especially, nobody's really highlighted this one, but to me, especially that meandering wide sidewalk area. My, one of our sons lives in Redmond in a development area where the developer put in some of those, they're quite wide with a meandering blacktop sidewalk, really nicely landscaped and everything. And every time I go there, I think to myself, man, why doesn't anybody do this in Sandy? It looks beautiful. And, and you know, my response is, well, it would take away too much land for putting houses on. And, and here this developer comes, I know exactly what that meandering sidewalk would look like, and it, they are just wonderful. So that, that part of it I really like. But one of the things that got me thinking, I'm, John, you, you kind of opened the bag for me. And it's, it may take a little bit of a history lesson, but one of the first things I did when this came up was I looked to the planned development intent section of the code. The first two points, A and B, nobody has referenced. Not the applicant, not staff, and nobody in the public. And here, under the intent section, it says, "The planned development regulations are intended to, A, refine and implement village development patterns designated, capital V, on the comprehensive plan map. And B, allow the relocation of zones within designated villages, provided that the overall intent of the village designation is maintained." Well, that kind of begs the question, because we have not talked about this. This goes back to the 2040 Plan, predates about everybody in the room. What is a village? And it was a big, big thing when we came up with the 2040 Plan and the comprehensive plan. And I just want to read from the comprehensive plan under the village commercial policies, and it says, "One of the central themes in the comprehensive plan is the use of village areas. These are compact neighborhoods, one hundred and sixty to two hundred acres, which are designed to encourage travel on foot and reduce reliance on the car. The center of each village includes housing, retail shops, public uses, a village green or park, and potentially a transit stop. The street pattern is connected and designed to provide direct and convenient access to the village center. The village commercial district is oriented to retail service uses to serve surrounding village residential development." So if you, and I apologize for reading that, and I don't want to be preaching, but it's some background history that got me to wondering, how does, how does a developer get to apply a PUD anywhere he wants, it appears? If you look at the comprehensive plan map, you will see certain designations that have the letter V. That's the village, that's where, when we did that comprehensive plan, the 2040 Plan, we kind of set out, say, okay, where would we put villages? Now, I will grant us that villages never got any traction in the city of Sandy. They just, we talked, we talked hours about them. And we just haven't seen them develop. But anyway, on the comprehensive plan, you see these Vs, and it's a particular color. Right across Highway 26, the development that we looked at recently is designated village. And then, so you look at, okay, when we took that designation on the comprehensive plan, when they came into the city, what zones did we apply? We applied the high-density, medium-low, and commercial within the village. That's because that's what the comprehensive plan wanted to see a village there. I say all that to say that where this property is, it is SFR. It always has been. And I just struggled, nobody has answered that question for me, is how nobody has addressed those first two intents. And I realize that the intent is not a checklist that you have to get every one of them. But they are listed first, and they do introduce a subject that nobody has talked about. So I question the applicability of being able to take this SFR and just say, oh, we want to do a planned development and look at the intent for the planned development and disregard the first two that say kind of why the planned development came through. That's, that's my little sermon, sometimes somebody maybe at the city council level can, can address that.
Can I address that, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah, I may be wrong, I may miss.
Yeah, no, so this, this very question came up, this was before Shelley worked at the city, and we were getting some inquiries about planned developments. Our last planned development we approved was in 2008, I believe. I didn't start working with the city until 2011, so in my tenure with the city of Sandy, we have never had a PD that's actually been requested, this is the first one tonight. So James Kramer, who was a previous planner, Emily Maharg, who's still one of our planners, and myself started looking at this code section. And this thing, this what you just mentioned popped out to us right away that we believed at first that only planned developments could only be applied in areas that were designated village on the comprehensive plan map because of the intent section. We then started reviewing where PUDs have been approved over the last twenty-some years. And I believe almost all of them have been approved in areas not with a village designation. Sammy Creek Estates where John, Mr. Logan lives, which he mentioned, that is a great example, that is not a village designation. So we were starting to think, well, wait a second, this is not really following the intent, all the previous approvals. So we reached out to our attorney, David Doofman, and he pointed out very quickly that intent sections, and I'm sure Chris, our attorney that's on the call tonight, can clarify this more if needed, Um, that intent sections are not criterion and are not actually code standards that we can actually evaluate. And so he said the more applicable thing we had to review was 176420, areas of application. The only thing that that section says is plan developments are allowed in all zones. And so David Doofman's interpretation was that PDs can be requested in any zone designation within the city of Sandy, regardless of what the intense section hints at at the top of that page. So, yeah, we had the same concern and the same inquiry and dilemma about, I think it was about two and a half years ago. And that's the legal advice we were given at the time.
Mm-hmm. And, and I, I can understand that because it, it, it does, uh, that's 176420. Um, kind of negates everything that goes before in reference to, uh, to the village. But I do, I still struggle with, as you all know, we have, we've had many people come before us usually, uh, opposing a development and saying, when I moved here, my developed, my realtor told me that there would never be an apartment back there or there would never be whatever. Well, somebody living in this area, if they looked at the zone map when they bought their house and it said, "Single family residential" across the street, what would keep them from, a realtor from saying, "That's single family residential." There will never be otherwise on there. Um, so it's kind of a, being able to come in with the, the PUD seems to just throw all that out, but, and maybe I'm missing something that this, could this be applied anywhere in the city that somebody has a challenging whatever to just say, hey, if we do a PUD, we can, it doesn't matter what that underlying zone is. We can do some things here, make it look nice and so. Those are my, one of my concerns. Um, I will get off of that. The final thing that I would, that I wanted to speak to to make sure that it goes forward to the city councils from, from my, my perspective is the homeowners association. Um, we were told that it was going to be a, um, like a professionally run one, which I was very glad to hear. But the staff has recommended, I believe somewhere in the, in the report that should the homeowners association disband, well, then the care of the land, um, the open spaces would go to the adjacent landowners, adjacent owners. Um, I, I'm looking at the map now and on the north views, there's a huge area, open space on the south end of it. And there's only one lot that is adjacent to that. So is, is the city saying, is staff saying that should this homeowners disband, that that lot owner and that one lot is responsible for caring for that whole section of dirt. It's huge compared to their lot. So I would like to see if it can be done that somehow it'd be written in, if this goes forward, that the homeowners association cannot be disbanded. I, they, they have not done well in Sandy, the, the, um, homeowner controlled ones. I'd be interested in any other comments on that, but it, um, I just can't see individual landowners. And now, you know, you, okay, so on the northern or the northeast side of the, um, northern development, you've got a green belt there. So you're, you're responsible for straight out the back of your lot. And how are we going to enforce that if I want to fix it? My neighbor doesn't want to fix it and?
I don't think that was the intent of the condition. Um, the intent of the condition and maybe it, maybe the condition would need to be written more clearly, it sounds like, is that, is that wherever there's sidewalks or that meandering path, those areas would need to be maintained by the adjacent property owners. Because typically sidewalks, as everybody knows, even though they're in the right of way, the adjacent property owner has maintenance responsibilities. But these areas would not be in the right of way. They're in a tract. And if that track was, if the HOA was to dissolve, we want to make sure that the sidewalk, um, maintenance costs and street tree maintenance costs were not going to be on the city of Sandy, that they would be on the adjacent property owners, just as if it was a sidewalk in a right of way. So maybe that just needs to be written more clearly.
So if, if it, if the homeowners were to disband and you've got that, the landscaping though, because you've got a wide area of that meandering area. You're saying that it'd be okay if the landscaping goes to rot? As long as the, the adjacent landowners take care of the trees and the sidewalk, i- is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of the issue with an HOA dissolving. I, I would turn to our attorney. I don't think we can prevent, if we allow an HOA, I don't think we can prevent one from dissolving, but I would turn to Chris on that.
Yeah, so, uh, two things. One, that's correct. The, the HOA will be governed by the CC and ours. And those again are a contract between the property owners to which the city is not a party and we can't control what the parties to a contract do with it. And the other thing is you can't stop somebody from reaching a contract, for example, by dissolving. The only question then becomes what are the damages if somebody breaches? So there's really nothing, very little the city can do to keep an HOA from dissolving. But we can try to, to foresee the downstream effects of that and, and anticipate them. Um, w- one thing I can tell you from the time I spent with, uh, Bonoma County Council's office advising their tax title department is the HOA is responsible for paying property taxes on the common elements. So like the open space tracts that the HOA is responsible for maintaining, they also pay the taxes on them. They're minimal, but because it's open space, so that the assessed value is very low. But if the HOA goes away and the taxes are not paid, eventually the county will foreclose on those tracts. And then the, the county doesn't want them either. So they will try to sell them to the adjacent property owners. At which point the property owner then does become responsible for them. You can, and that's how I think, that's, that's what I think would happen to the, uh, fish tracts. The one you were talking about where there's only one property owner next to a big piece. For the sidewalk, I think what Kelly described is exactly what would happen. We put a condition of approval in it and then we can, um, enforce that condition against the adjacent property owners. But whether they take care of the, um, landscaping to the, the shrubbery to the same extent an HOA would, that's going to be tough to control. But you can certainly get them to take care of the sidewalk, cut the grass, take care of the trees, things like that.
Chris, can you also talk to the fact of the intent versus that other section, the P, PD section?
Right. So I think, I, I'm not familiar with the comprehensive plan provisions, this section, the code chapter, basically 17.64 implements. But if I were reading this, I would say that the intent of the city council in adopting these code provisions is that there's a clear focus on villages in the PD section, but it's not limited to that. 17 point, was it 64.020 specifically says a PD can be applied in all zones across the city. It's a single sentence. It couldn't be clearer. So while, whereas the focus may have been on villages, it wasn't limited to villages. Uh, and I, I, I'm shocked that a realtor might give a buyer bad information about what the code allows on adjacent.
Oh, really?
So, the code, the code allows, the code allows it to be, it couldn't be clear, 17.64.20. PDs are allowed in all zones, even though the focus may have been villages, if they're not limited to villages.
To answer your other question, Jerry, the, the sidewalk is the main cost burden for the city is to maintain the sidewalk. Would I like, I mean, as a planner that lives in the community, would I like it if we had more control over the planter strip? Uh, and how good they look around town? Of course I would. Um, we can limit the, um, what's actually put in the planter strip if we were to adopt more strict standards. Um, but I can tell you, it's a code enforcement nightmare on grass length. What sort of shrubs and rock are being put in them? If the trees are being properly pruned. I mean, I think the planter strips around town, which are a great amenity for the city, is probably like a third of our code enforcement's job task is making sure people are making those areas look decent. Um, it's unfortunate that there's not more, uh, pride in those planter strips. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a burden on the city. And I think either if it's an HOA that dissolves or a traditional planter strip setup, it will continue to be, um, at least a percentage of properties, no matter what we do, will be, continue to be a burden on our resources, unfortunately. Just so you know, Mr. Robinson has his hand raised. I don't know if you want to entertain questions or comments from him or not.
Uh, maybe in a moment. Let's do a, I, I've been talking too much and I want to make sure that some other commissioner has a thought or, uh, something to put in. And then, then we'll go to Mr. Robinson and get his, before we, um, get back to kind of wrapping things up and, and getting it back to staff. So any other commissioner have a?
Jerry? I, I kicked it off and, um, I did cut short some of my comments because, um, a lot of them had to work the bottom and it had to do with, uh, you know, when the change was made on the nine units. Um, you know, I appreciate the developer doing that. I would, I would suggest until some sightline analysis is done. I don't know if knocking one story off that building is going to help the neighbors see the mountain or not. Okay, so it just make, it's a nice gesture, but I'm not sure what will, will be the effects. This can be where that. Um, I was going to make a couple of comments in the HOA. Uh, been a member of a couple of HOAs. I was a treasurer of one that was a commercial business for 31 units for 10 years. So I know HOAs, I own a conduit act, I know CCR, they're all that up one side and down the other. And unless the developer just figures out a way to maintain 51% control of the HOA, he can say it's going to be a professional development or whatever, but that isn't going to be the case. He, he could own the apartments, but if he doesn't have 51% controlling vote within the HOA, it will be whatever it happens to be. So I just want folks to be aware that the developer, you know, has some good intents here. But unless some of that becomes, you know, codes, you know, conditions of approval and has some teeth in it, that may not be the case. In fact, it hasn't been too long I've sat on this commission where we were exactly in the reverse. And that was, we were, and Tracy knows this when, uh, in his tenure, is that when we, we have the same concerns that have all been expressed by the park board and all the rest on these, uh, on these open spaces. And we actually required them to deed them to the city. So that we had control over the maintenance of them. Now, I know that begs the question, where's the city going to get the money to maintain these areas? But hey, Sandy's up to 12,000. That's a, that's a city council question, you know? It's, it's time that they start to address, uh, if you're going to have parks, you're going to have to maintain them. You know, whatever it is, you know, you put together it is, it's taxes, it's whatever it happens to be. But, you know, I've been on this commission long enough to know that we just flipped ourselves around. And yeah, HOAs are maintained by the energy of the individuals. I said, I sit in right next to one. I'm not in the, I am not in the development, but my next door neighbor and across the street are in the development. They got nine pages of CCRs. Nobody goes by them. And people just do what they want to do. And I'm sure all kinds of places where violations of those are made, nobody does anything. Historically, you know, as I think several have said, HOAs generally are failure. They generally don't work. They start out with good intents, but they don't work. So I think concerns are valid. Um, and I, you know, like I said, there was parkland that's being required. In this particular case, the golfer choosing not to dedicate these recreational areas to the city and actually use them for his parkland dedication. But, you know, he could, um, or the city could ask him to. Uh, that would be up to the city council. But, uh, you know, if we want parks and we want nice parks like over in Timberline, the state's is a good example, uh, of that, uh, we just got to build them. And just taking money in lieu of and putting it in the coffers and not seeing anything come out the other end, doesn't get you parks with nice stuff in the parks, um, et cetera. So I've got developers doing these. I just wish that some of that would be dedicated. If it goes through, um, you know, my opinion's on, on approval. But if it goes through, it would be dedicated to the city. And so then it would be available for everybody to use and, uh, we know it will be maintained.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, uh, let's go to you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Crosby. I, I say, Mike Robinson on behalf of the applicant, you've not closed the record yet. And, um, not, not to be a commercially attorney, you've sort of strayed into some new evidence here. And you're also maybe considering new conditions. So if you would allow me, I just want maybe 30 seconds to respond to this on behalf of the applicant. In terms of maintaining the, the improvements that you've described, there's another way to do it. And that's simply a maintenance agreement that's binding on all of the owners in that area. And they pay into an escrow account. Title companies can manage that. It doesn't require an HOA. So, uh, I, I think there's probably plenty of evidence on the other side to suggest that HOAs do work. But I don't want to get into that. I just wanted to address this issue. But if your concern is, are these common features going to be ma- maintained? And do it with an HOA. But as Mr. Crane said, it's difficult to prevent them from disbanding. So another way to do it is simply a, a maintenance agreement that runs with the land and that's possible as well. So if you're concerned about imposing, I'm sorry, you're not imposing conditions. Uh, I guess you could, but if you're concerned about that issue and you want to make a recommendation, that's certainly something I think the applicant would accept. And thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Crosby.
Thank you. Yeah, John?
Um, unmuting, there we go. Uh, the only comment that I have, you know, with the HOA and the fee in lieu of, uh, you know, the park dedication is the city's getting $472,000 out of that fee in lieu of park dedication. So if this HOA were to dissolve, I don't know, but could the city maintain some of these parks? Everybody says it's coming out of their pocket, but let's face it, you're getting almost $500,000 upfront.
I can answer that question. Um, we can certainly maintain the areas because that's taken out of the general fund budget at the city of Sandy. We cannot use SDCs to make improvements unless, uh, that park is added to the park's master plan. And then, uh, the methodology is revised to allow for SDC, uh, payments to be made for those areas. So, um, definitely maintenance, like weed trimming and stuff like that. Although it would be an additional burden on our parks maintenance staff. Uh, but legally we can maintain them. But yeah, the SDC thing would be problematic.
Is there a way to condition that in if this were to dissolve someday?
Um, Commissioner Logan or Commissioner Crosby, if I may. One thing that I've seen, I've only seen one city do it, but I think it's brilliant. Um, they keep an eye on those HOAs that go defunct. And when a large tract, um, the county has to, you know, takes over, forecloses on one of the large tracts because the taxes weren't paid. The county sells those tracts for the back taxes, which can sometimes be as little as a few hundred dollars, usually not more than a few thousand dollars. Buy the property for a few thousand dollars and then you'll still have to worry about ma- uh, improving it. And, uh, Kelly's right, if it's not on your SDC CIP, you won't, you can't use SDCs to improve it. But at that point you'll have the land and, uh, you know, some, loo- look for the resources to maintain it. But as far as conditioning this, I, I don't know how you put a condition of approval in a land use decision that would convey the property to the city at a future date. If the HOA goes to, it just goes away. Frankly, it, the county foreclosure would take priority over that anyway.
The city, uh, just so everybody knows, has in my tenure here, I think at least acquired one or two times surplus land through the foreclosure process. I think only once in the 10 years I've been here, but I, I think the city's aware of that option as well.
But the county for, a tax foreclosure has priority over all other claims to the property. So we, it would, it would take precedence over our condition of approval.
Okay, procedural thing. Uh, I'd like us to close the public hearing so we can move to wrapping up our final discussion and, uh, advisement to, uh, city council.
I move we close the public hearing.
Oh, we're gonna let John do it.
Okay, yeah, was that you?
John do.
Okay, Don moved it and who seconded it? They always, John, okay, that, that'll, they always like to put it in the minutes. Um, so anyway, move to, uh, close the public hearing and this is at 10, 20, all in favor say. So anyway, move to close the public hearing and this is at ten, twenty, all in favor say aye, raise your hand. I, I see, okay. Motion passed. Now, now it's just.
Great school. I love it.
Yeah. Now it's just down to us and staff.
I, just so you know, Jerry, I was writing down the main talking points for every single one of you. I'm sure Shelley was. And so I have a pretty good picture of the, I guess what I would summarize as your concerns and also the things that you think the development proposal does pretty well. It would take me a while to read through all of them, but I do have a pretty good snapshot of your guys' feeling about the development. Just to let you know, we have been taking notes. You don't have to go through the questions still.
We want to go through those, those questions, A through what, or you know, how you want to proceed there. And you know, Kelly might, since he wrote them, he might want to give us his advice based on what he just said.
Well, Ron, Ron had a, had his hand up there.
I did. Mine is a little bit more, it goes along a little bit with process. Like I think we all have an idea where we're coming from, where we stand behind. I hate the word feel, but I mean, use it. I feel like by giving the standing vote on one piece of it that you're not for all of it. I think that my, my feelings again on this are, I don't see any iteration. It's either you take the whole thing as is or, or not. And I think from the years that I've been on here doing this, this has been iterative processes like this, you know, ninety-five percent of it looks pretty good. Here's where we see, see some adjustments. But I'm not hearing that. All right. So I think it'd be good that we step through the different points so we can get those clarified. I think we know where those votes kind of come out on it. But that's what I feel a little bit remiss on is, I think there's some points that we've brought up that really need to be circle around again and make some, some adjustments to. Like you over the, the story on the, one story on the apartment, okay? But again, I feel like it's like if you're not all in for what this is, then you're, you're kind of a, you're not with the team. So I, I see our role again as a trying to take a good plan and help refine it even better. So.
Mike or Chris?
Chairman, thank you. Just for an essence of time and process, I, I really would like to get to a consensus on the eighteen questions. And I, I'm just a recommendation. You could do with it where you will. If we can just start with the first one and look at each other and say yes or no, so we can give the city council what our consensus recommendation is. We don't necessarily think, I think we need to do a roll call vote for each one, but I think answering those questions is paramount and the only, you know, once, once we each say what we have to say about it, if we have questions, to discuss it, but just for an essence of time.
Okay.
Let's roll.
Chris, Chris, I can hard, I can hardly hear you. I don't think anybody else can either.
It's, it's still a challenge.
All right, is that better?
Oh, wait.
Took my headphones out.
You're in the room now.
Turn the volume up on the headphones.
Yeah. No, I, I can, Ron, Ron was seconding your thoughts and I, I'm fine with that. It, it feels to me like, and Don, Don has already shared his general no vote, let's say. But I think from what I picked up from the, the rest of you that you would say we would move it on to city council with our recommendation, but with serious concerns and hesitancies. And that's the issues that we're going to discuss now. Is that kind of a premise to start on?
I, I think if I can, I think that Chris is right on it. We just go through the questions without any comments and say yes, no.
Okay.
Everybody vote and they, somebody can tally them up and get to the end.
Yep, agree.
Yeah, because ultimately it's a consensus vote for each one is what our recommendation will be regardless of what our individual thought would be. It's the consensus vote. And we're recommending or not recommending that condition for, for suggestion.
Well, I, I'm also saying if I can, that I think going back to city council is if it's on lot size and it's, it's, I think you should see where the spread is of, of that. It may be, it may be just me that's concerned about lot size, okay? And everybody else votes yes. I think it's important to see how the votes are tallied for each individual and pass those along, not saying that.
It'll be on the record if we do that, right? Saying yes or no and why. So it'll be on the.
I think he's just saying it's just Jerry asked for, just, I mean, show of hands, easiest way here. Just to go through number one, how many, you say yes, put up your hand, count them. How many say no, put up your hand, write it down, go on to number two. I agree with Ron. The city council needs to know that it was a four to three, for example. It wasn't a seven, zero or whatever. They need to know that there were some concerns, you know, and then it's in their bucket, you know, we just go home.
What is, what is our, what is the level of this, of the planning commission's concern on that particular issue?
Yes.
Was it high, low or medium? And so I don't think it matters to, to record names.
Names, I'm just going to get numbers.
Yeah, please don't record names. It's gonna be a tracking nightmare.
Okay.
You may want to do a roll call vote on the last one if that's what needed as a formality.
Or your motion.
Wise, but on the others, I don't think you do.
Wouldn't the last one be your motion basically to forward it with a recommendation of approval or denial?
Right. And that's why I'm gonna take a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Okay, we need.
Can you hold up one second, Jerry? Because Shelley and I are going to be doing this, so I want to make sure we're coordinated on who's right and what down.
I'm, I'm, I can write down all the tallies, all the yeses and nos.
For questions.
A is gonna be real easy because it doesn't apply anymore.
Right.
Right, right.
We're down to seventeen?
Jerry?
Yes.
Can you read each one out so that anybody in the audience knows what we're voting on?
Yeah. Long. The first one is, and I will take out the phrasing, does the planning commission recommend? And I'll translate that to, would you recommend permitting row houses in the single family residential zoning district? Would you recommend permitting row houses in SFR zoning? Yes, show of hands. Okay. I would say four yeses. My hand's not up.
I saw five hands.
Oh.
The only one with his hands not up was Carlton and Crosby.
Chris is all black in that picture.
So it's five to two?
Yeah.
How was the yes?
Yep, we got it. Okay.
I won't know. I don't know. You know, you gotta get procedurally here. So we just don't get mixed up. We just go.
Well, yeah, I think the fastest is an easiest way is just if you ask a yes, you raise your hand and then that means the other people are nos.
Yep. Okay. Do you recommend permitting multifamily housing in the SFR zoning district? Yes would be a raised hand.
So four to three.
Two's apartment houses.
Okay, I see four yeses. Do you recommend allowing lot sizes less than seventy-five hundred square feet? And that would be in this proposal.
Account three.
Okay. Do you recommend allowing minimum average lot widths less than sixty feet?
Three again.
Three. Do you recommend allowing interior side yard setbacks at five feet when the typical standard is seven point five feet? Interior side yard setbacks.
That's three.
Three. Do you recommend reducing the rear yard setbacks from twenty feet to ten feet for lots forty-seven to fifty-six? And reducing it from twenty feet to fifteen feet for lots eighty-four, eighty-six and eighty-eight to one oh two? Do you recommend reducing?
Three.
Okay, three. Do you recommend allowing block lengths at six ninety-one, six hundred and ninety-one feet on the views drive from Vista Loop Drive to Bonnie Street? At six hundred and fifty-five feet on the north side of Bonnie Street and at eight hundred and five feet on Knapp Street from Vista Loop Drive to Ortiz Street? And I'm a yes on that one.
Seven.
Do you recommend approval of the request to provide meandering walkways within private open space tracks rather than a traditional sidewalk slash planter strip in the public right of way? With the condition that the tracks maintain a minimum width of fifteen feet to accommodate a five foot wide walkway with an average of five foot wide planter strips on either side? Mine's, my hands up.
Seven.
Do you recommend approval of the request to not provide a sidewalk on the south side of the views drive? With the condition that track E on the north side of the views drive be designed as proposed. That is approximately nineteen feet wide with five feet planting space on either side of the meandering walkway to accommodate street trees and both, on both sides of the walkway. So this is recommended to not provide a sidewalk across from the meandering. Do you recommend approval of the request to not provide front doors facing highway twenty-six and instead allow the lot line abutting highway twenty-six to be considered the rear lot line, rear yard, so the sound wall can be six feet in height?
Seven.
Okay, do you recommend phasing this development in two distinct phases as proposed by the applicant? If so, what policies would you recommend for the, for the two? Okay, now we're getting to a complex question.
Skip it.
Skip it?
Yeah, I think you guys are, I think if you guys are in favor of the phasing, I think you would also most likely be in favor of phasing parks fee in lieu and expiration dates.
Okay, with that, with that explanation, yeses on this one.
Six.
Six.
Oh, seven.
Wake up, Don. Okay, do you recommend to not require a right turn lane at the intersection of Vista Loop Drive and highway twenty-six? I don't need to read the rest of that, I don't think.
One.
One.
Clear on that. That's negative. You recommend, a yes means you're recommending no turn lane.
Yes. Do you recommend to not require a right turn lane?
And just for clarity, that's not to say that it won't ever be a recommendation, but to put it on this developer is what the question is.
I, I agree with Kelly on this, that it's ODOT's burden at this point, not the applicant.
I, I agree with John. So.
We should raise our hand then, right?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait. If we agree, I'm, now you guys have got me all confused.
Well, the question, the, the question would be to, yes would say, don't require the right turn to be the burden of the developer.
Okay.
Which ultimately I guess is saying that you're not requiring the builder to be responsible for, for creating the enhancements for the right turn lane. So they could go ahead and build the property without putting that right turn lane in or enhancement to it.
Yes, but all we're saying with a yes vote on this one is we don't want the developer builder to have that burden.
Right.
Okay.
That, with that, I think it's important we share with council that what Kelly said is it needs to be done and for the, the council to start to work with ODOT to get it done because Kelly gave us a very good principled argument. Yeah, that doesn't mean a darn thing to somebody whose kid just got killed because they got rear ended on that. But it's a logical, emotional issue. It's not really analytical. I know what it, the people that testified.
Right. Not, not to add burden to the record, but just because I feel like I need to. I think there is some responsibility from the developer here who's going to be adding a hundred and fifty-nine units in their proposed development to help get that enhanced regardless of whether they have to pay for it or not. They should be help pushing to get ODOT to make that change and recognizing that it, it, it does create a safety issue and burden, but that's just my humble opinion for the record. Sorry, we can move on.
The next one, this is, is another complex one because it's an either or. Do you recommend the proposed future street layout north of Ortiz Street as proposed by the applicant? Or would you recommend a street stub and/or pedestrian connection to the north in the vicinity of where Knapp Street intersects with Ortiz Street? We didn't talk much about that, so you may be as much in the fog about it as I am, but.
If you have a map in front of you, basically what it's saying is if you want to destroy lots one and ninety-two, that's what would happen. And, and it basically goes through. When you say to the north, it, it's one of those things that's correct, but remember the map's not pointing north. But that property to the north is developed, is, is our two. There's assumption is it would be developed into multifamily of which all one lot already has. I think, like, you're familiar with the development that's up there. I don't know the name of it, but Kelly does. But that, that's kind of the question.
Just to. This isn't a yes or no. This is a street or stub. That should be the answer. It's either a street or stub. Two options, right?
No, it's actually more, no, it's not that. It's, do you want a street stub, pedestrian pathway or nothing as is.
Pedestrian is the third option.
This is one thing where the applicant and the city staff kind of had a little bit of a disagreement. I do, I do, originally I think staff was leaning towards a street extension north. The applicant did bring up a lot of good points, so I think the staff would still recommend losing one of those lots most likely and extending a pedestrian connection up so that if those are, that land north is developed in the future, it can connect through a pedestrian connection. I do remember Mr. Lasowski and some other commissioners voicing their strong support of having more pedestrian paths around town. So we thought this would be a spot that we could get one. I do agree with the applicant. There's probably no necessity to bring a street stub up there.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map and I'm looking at both the map and I'm also looking at the distances, you know, on a, on an aerial photo. It just doesn't seem logical to me. You'd want to punch a street all the way through there. It would be, it would create a short distance between it and where the T comes out. So I think the pedestrian path makes sense, but I, I don't see why you'd want to punch another street through there that might only be just to the west of, it would intersect Vista Loop, but only a few hundred feet to the west of the current intersection. So.
Okay, so the, let me put the question, which I do, do you recommend a pedestrian connection to the north? Let's do hands that way. Okay, that is seven. That would recommend a pedestrian connection to the north. I believe that takes care of that question, right, Kelly?
Yeah, I mean, I think we originally were leaning towards a street stub, but I, I agree a hundred percent with Don that it would not only, it would also come out at a curve on Vista Loop. It wouldn't work for a lot of reasons. So I think it, it's either a pedestrian connection or nothing. But it sounds like it was seven, nothing for pedestrian connection.
Okay, do you recommend that additional vegetation is planted between the sound wall and the sidewalk along highway twenty-six to make it more pedestrian friendly and to soften the large concrete wall? This is recommending additional vegetation.
I, I would, for example, with Todd or whatever, I'm not sure which is safer for the pedestrians. So whatever. I'm just trying to figure out whatever the safest for people that are on highway twenty-six would be. I don't know if vegetation would make it worse, so.
Well, this is between the sound wall and the sidewalk. Well, this is between the sound wall and the sidewalk, so it's not the sidewalk and the highway.
And, and the sidewalk's on the top of the hill, right?
Yeah, the sidewalk.
It's up on.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Nice.
Thank you.
Buff for the wall.
I wouldn't do it just because of maintenance, it's on the other side of the wall. We're going to put ladders over the wall at every household.
So that was six to one, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do you have any other recommendation relating to the modify, modifying other findings? And I would add, from our discussion, would be to look into that maintenance agreement option that, that was mentioned? And, and I think that was in lieu of a HOA or, or.
Yeah, we, we'll have to work with our city attorney's office, I'm not familiar with that at all. I'm only familiar with HOAs, not maintenance agreements. I don't know if Mr. Crane is familiar with that option as presented by Mike Robinson, I've never heard of it.
I skipped letter P, didn't I? Yeah, do you have any, do you have any additional recommendations related to the maintenance zone by the HOA? And that's where we would say, yes.
Look into.
Look into the other, other options that would, that would allow it to be maintained into perpetuity.
You want to take a vote on that one?
Yeah. This is recommending further research into the homeowners to put, to put more teeth into it. This is, I think, what my, my take on it.
Yeah.
Five? Six. Okay, and then any other recommendations? We just actually added that one, but was there anything else that, that you all felt that you picked up in our discussions that would be other?
Well, I, I, from, from me Chairman, the only thing I would say for the other is, I would like to see some formal documentation on the developer's part on lowering that one apartment to a two-story and making sure it's implemented with this plan for consideration of approval.
Do, actually, that's, yeah, I think that's a great point. Do you, I think another thing that Dawn wrote, raised, which I had never thought of, which is a really good point, is do you also want them to submit sightline analysis on that apartment?
Yeah, that was a good, if, now I'm just speaking personally, but if the reason for dropping it is sightline, then I would think you need to substantiate that with a sightline analysis.
Well, you know, the developer is, that's, is intent. All I'm saying is, living in a view neighborhood, if some of you know where I live, unless you have a documented view easement as part of your deed or that somebody else's deed says you have a view easement, you don't, okay? And it's just tough luck, that's all I can say, you know? So, you know, I, the people that are concerned, I suspect they don't have a view easement, so the developer's being gracious and saying, we're going to try and preserve your view. All I'm saying is, until you know the sightlines, you don't know if his gracious act is going to preserve his view or just now they're going to see the top of Mount Hood and they're not going to see the bottom. You follow me?
I think, I think the sightline analysis is a really good point. We do it for units on top of commercial buildings and other things that, so I think Dawn's suggestion on that is really needed if, if you guys feel the same.
Would that, would that be done now or when the apartment comes in a design review?
Could be done later because it is going to be done later, but at the end of the day, it would be nice to know. I think the developer is going to be nice to know and the residents can actually know if that really is going to mitigate the issue, that's my point.
I think now would be the best time, I mean, they don't have to come up with the exact design of the apartment, that's what the design review is going to be for, but they could come up with a maximum height.
Well, the other thing it changes too is it changes the density of, of units in that, in that property line. Regardless of the sightline changes, it went from a hundred and sixty-eight to a hundred and fifty-nine, so that's a significant change in our code, you know, that was the first question.
Right, I mean, so the point is, that, that means we don't have to go through that. I mean, he said he wants, all I'm saying is, you can do that, but at the end of the day, it still may block the people's view.
Am I?
So you just have to get out there with your transect and, and your, you know, your diode light or whatever and figure it out.
Yeah. Okay, so that would be a tweak that we would recommend modifying, adding that in? Yes, no? Raised hands?
Well, I agree that they do it, just give me a condition of approval.
Is that four? I don't know. Half the people are touching their face right now, so I can't tell if that's a raised hand.
Let's see those hands, those hands.
John, hand or you just kind of?
That's, oh man, that's seven, that's seven.
Sorry.
Pass my bedtime.
I know, it's getting late.
The last one, do you recommend approval of, of the Views Plan Development? Can we say yes, but?
I think they could see that in the numbers.
I don't know, Chris, do they have to make a formal recommendation on approval or not? Or, or does all these other answers kind of get that, to that?
It does, right? You, yeah, you, you don't have to make a formal recommendation on whether to approve or not.
Well, the, the staff report.
Requires that you make a recommendation, it doesn't say a recommendation for approval or not, a recommendation, and you've made, you know, twenty recommendations. Okay, so we could just conclude that our discussion has been our recommendation? Your, your recommendations are listed below. Okay, without a motion. Right.
Or if you could make a motion, but it sounds like that could be tricky.
Well, it could be, it could be tricky, but you know, you know, you asked that we basically do it. There is a motion in the first staff report, it was not included in the second staff report. So, I mean, there's one a person basically could make. My question is, do we need a motion, do we need a roll call vote? I do think it's important that the city council understands, if we look at this thing as a whole, you know, how many people said it would be, they would approve and how many, well, said no, so. Not different than any of the other twenty we've looked at.
Okay, I, do you see his point? He's saying that by, by doing a, a hand raise on this last question gives the council a sink, a sense of the general strength of our support for it.
I agree.
So, so would you say, you know, given our whole discussion and all the things that we've talked about, would you recommend approval to city council? With a yes hands?
I count four.
Four.
Is that, okay, one point of clarity so that we can write up the staff report correctly. Is that a yes with considering all the other modifications that you talked about in your other vote?
Yes.
Or with no changes to the proposal?
No, with, with changes, I worded it such that it's with, with the changes in our discussion.
Gotcha.
So it wasn't a cock-bunch, yes.
Gotcha.
If the.
It's just hard for, for, I guess, Chairman, just for a quick second, it's, it's hard to say yes to that because there's four or five questions that were asked specifically around lot sizing that I adamantly disagree with. And even if the consensus was to move forward with it, I'm opposed to it, which would make me opposed to the overall plan, and I would be looking for consideration. That's why I voted no in totality for the record.
Yeah, no, I understand that. As I said at the beginning, this, this has been a complex one, it's different than what we're used to doing. I mean, golly, we got by without a motion, I mean.
What are we going to do? Todd, Todd hasn't had a chance to make a, well, he can close, he can, he can do the adjournment.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we get this right because it's going to be a staff report and then it's going to be two months before council hears it. So what you're basically saying is that it's four to three that you would recommend approval if there was modifications to the application based on your yes-no votes throughout?
Yes. Can I make one more suggestion?
Wait, wait.
Can I make a suggestion? The recommendation can be that the city council approve or deny the application after full consideration of the recommendations and concerns of the planning commission listed below.
Yes, that.
That, yeah, I like that better.
The, the other doesn't make sense, it would be impossible to tease out. I like the clarity, Chris.
So the, the city council should approve or deny the application after full consideration of the planning commission's concerns and recommendations listed below. Okay, Ron, does that answer the question you were going to ask?
Yeah, I was along the same line as, as Chris on it is, you know, if I had those things that could change, I'd be yes. And again, how do you come off of this saying you're not behind it? You know, that, that, that's why I hope that gets back to city council is, I like the intent, I like everything that they're doing on it. Like to see a little, little more adjustments, that's all.
Okay, so what Chris said can be a motion. That sure sounded like a good motion to me.
Can you repeat it one more time for the record?
The, the motion would be to recommend to the city council that the council approve or deny the application after full consideration of the planning commission's concerns and recommendations listed below, and then list them out.
How do you, if that's a motion, how do you vote yes or no on it? Because you use both, you said approve or deny.
Is that, is, well, I mean, you're kicking it up to the city council, they have to approve or deny. It's, I mean, it's kind of a, a no-brainer, they have to do that.
It's their job, not ours this time.
A big.
But still, I, you know, I'm, go back to R, basically Kelly has asked us to, if we were king of for the day, we approve or deny, he's asked us that question, and I think we can give the council that.
I, I don't know that I could because I have not been looking at it with that set of eyeglasses on. That Jerry, you have to, at the end of the day, make a decision, yes or no. With what conditions? Right. That's the problem, you don't know what the conditions would be. Right, so we can't, we can't make.
Right.
That's where I, that's where I was going from the beginning. I don't know what conditions are going to be approved and not approved by city council, therefore I can't give them a recommendation of whether I approve or not. I, I love the idea of the pub, but I, I, I need the tweaks made to make it work for me. So I can't give a recommendation for it, so I, if you, if you're asking me to give either or, then I have to be against it. That's why I voted no.
Like Hollis.
But didn't, didn't we just give them our recommendations on every little detail? So I think what Chris was saying about if they carefully consider our feedback on each of those items, then they could go ahead and make their decision. I mean, that was our job, was to give them our input, and that is our input pretty detailed.
No, I, I think you're right too Hollis, but I think what Dawn was saying is that that question clearly asks us for our opinion on this, so it's, it's, you know, kind of a two-folded question. One is, you're right, we gave all our, our, you know, indifferent descriptions of what we wanted, but this last question is asking, does the planning commission recommend it for approval? And that's, I mean, we took that vote, it's four to three, I think that's, we, we can stand on that.
So that, that question isn't like a legal requirement, it's not a, you know, a regulatory or statutory requirement at all, it's just something that came from Kelly. So, yeah, I think kind of what, I mean, it's a good question, I mean, not saying that like, you know what I mean? So I'm, I'm inclined to agree with our attorney that the recommendation is all of those yes and no votes and all of the little things as opposed to a recommendation, yes or no, approve, deny of the entire thing.
The reality is the planning commission doesn't get to approve or deny, the city council has to. And they're asking for you guys to sort of issue spot where the issues are and where they might include conditions or, or give them reasons to approve or deny it. And I think your, your recommendations have done that.
So I think, to clarify, you've, you've summed it up. Question R has been asked and answered, now we move on to a motion that says what you said, Chris.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and make it if, if you're comfortable with it. If somebody would like, if somebody would like to make this motion, it would be that the planning commission recommend the city council approve or deny the application after full consideration of the planning commission's issues and concerns and recommendations listed below, and then to have them list.
I motion what he said.
And I second what you said that he said.
Todd, you want to make that motion?
It's been moved by Chris, seconded by Hollis, that we recommend to whatever Chris said, that they deny or approve based upon our, our discussion, our issues that have been listed in the staff report, in the report, in the minutes, actually. Okay, now we'll do a roll call vote.
What? Why?
Yeah.
Every motion gets a roll call vote.
Yeah, we have a, we have a.
Okay, you wanted to, okay, so Commissioner Carlton?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lasowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean-Wenzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Sort of hard to vote against that, so, yes.
Commissioner Maithen?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chairman Crosby?
Yes, motion carries. With that said, it is nearly eleven o'clock. I think we've put that public hearing to bed. We need Todd to speak.
Chairman, really quick, I did, I did mention it earlier, but I just want to say thank you, Todd and John, for the training that you have allowed me to endure in the last year and a half sitting in this seat. I'm only continuing because of what you two have, have led me to believe, and I'm, I'm thankful for your integrity and your, your time and spent volunteering for the city of Sandy. And I know, especially for you Todd, I'm an avid social media follower and I've heard a lot of bad things said about you, and none of them are true. You're the, I don't know you personally, but I know you from here and I'm going to miss you both. And I look to see you in the, in the crowd more, and I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier. So I'll, I'll be quiet now, Chairman, and give it over to Todd.
Before we, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure we're going to have a quorum in January, since we'll be down one person. And I got, I got a reply from Commissioner Lasowski today that said yes to the invite and then no, so I didn't know if that meant you were not going to be available.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay, does anyone know if they're not going to be available for January twenty-fifth? Because we do have like three, they'll all be much smaller decisions than tonight, but we do have like three hearings.
Well, it's on my calendar.
Mine too.
On mine.
Okay, sounds like we'll have a quorum then.
Good.
Can I say one twenty seconds before you adjourn? Commissioner Crosby, you mentioned earlier about some confusion about the intent and it needs to be a village, and what does that mean? So I've been with the city for almost a year and I'm still trying to figure out what a village is. The development code says some things about it, the comprehensive plan says some things about it, what they actually look like in practice looks completely different. But Kelly and I have been talking about, you know, starting and the process of updating the comprehensive plan. And that's definitely one of my priorities, is to figure out what the heck a village is and like what that actually looks like in Sandy. So I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that's important that I think we need to address in the comp plan update.
If the history lesson helped, good, because there was a lot of hoopla
Yeah.
about the village concept at that era in the nineties when we did that. And examples were given, Fairview was one, and then there was another one on the west side. It began with a letter A, I forget the name of it, that were held up as the poster children of village ideas. And the city planner at that time, and I can't remember if it was Tamara or Sue Barker. Was it, was it Sue? Was it, was it Sue? That, that was, that was what, what, what was pushed through. And like I said, when I said it never, it hasn't gained traction. I, I believe that to be true because you don't see any commercial down in Boynestead. You know.
I think Ron can tell you probably why that's the case, but that's kind of another topic, I think, for another time. Because, you know, making, making a piece of ground commercial on the map and deciding if you can put a viable business on it are two different discussions.
Yeah.
And that's probably one of the problems with what you said, and I wanted to say, Jerry, that first of all, I agree with what you said. I mean, I noticed that a month and a half ago. I, you know, I frequently read the code. Unfortunately, I've read the PD code more than I want to. It's in my dreams, bad dreams, and, and I, and I struggled with that because it appeared right off the bat, the intent is if you have a village, you have a variety of housing types, you have commercial. If you want to mix them all around, well, you'd do it through a PD. It just seemed like, you know, I asked Kelly, when did this come from? He said, oh, in the 90s, they put this in the code. Well, what was the intent when they put it in the code? We don't know. Was it really to provide a mechanism to make changes inside of a village? Well, either way, you know, I know its interpretation is from council, or from our legal council, which is it applies anywhere. And I think a key thing that for staff to think about and for us to think about is if this is true, all the zoning we currently have makes no, doesn't make any difference. A developer come in and plop a PD down on any land in Sandy and with the, with the, as staff has said, very subjective approval criteria that's in the code.
Yeah, I think Hollis is ready to go out. Appreciate your comments, Don, but I think you're, you're being.
Merry Christmas.
voted, and Todd, we need a motion, final words. Oh, I don't know. Does John want to make the motion? He'll second it. All right, I'll, I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Merry Christmas.
Aye, yes, Merry Christmas all.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.